To our informal session. We have a little added item that we're going to reluctantly talk about. And Jim Wood, you know, one of the things about being on council in elective office for a long time is that you get to know people and build those relationships and things. And I'm going to give a couple of minutes for Jim Wood to make an announcement. And I'll tell you what, it's, Jim has been nothing but a friend and a colleague. And the one thing I know about Jim Wood, he'll always think about family first and doing the right thing. And so, Jim, if you are willing to say a few words.
Well, thanks. I wasn't expecting that. The, I want to apologize for three of you that I was unable to speak to directly because of the fact that somehow the media found out and told me they were going to report it no matter what. So, I sent out the email, which was rather impersonal, to the three of you that didn't get the phone call, but that's the way it is. I just, I appreciate the opportunity to serve. It's been a, it's been a great time. You know, I would underscore this, because my mom says, please tell everybody you're not leaving because you're sick. And no, that's not it. I'm also not leaving because the FBI is two steps behind me or anything like that. It's strictly related to a, to a job opportunity that they came up completely unsolicited, and I just felt I couldn't pass it up. And as much as I would like to try to do both jobs at the same time, I just can't, can't do justice. And I'm, I'm still going to be living in Virginia Beach, and I'm still going to be, you know, working where I work, and I'll be, I'll be around, I'll be here every, every Tuesday, signing up for most of the items on the agenda.
Every item?
Of course, open the mic.
And so, you know, that way we'll have two single-issue speakers, so.
Yeah, so just adjust the speaker policy. But seriously, I'm, I'm going to remain certainly a huge supporter of Virginia Beach, and I'll be here, still got my phone, you guys can reach out to me anytime you want, and that's it, so thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you ruled out Cygnus and the FBI, so how about me? It's not my fault because I showed up. I want to rule everything.
Anyway, anyway, I ruled out this.
And if I could just make a comment, and, you know, I did speak to the press today, and let me just tell you what I said. Jim Wood and I, you know, became mayor and vice mayor pretty much at the same time. And what Jim has done over the last couple of years, and, you know, he really, you know, did an exemplary job. With Louis spending a lot of time as vice mayor and Jim, the bar has been raised. But Jim, I would say, it wouldn't be unlikely that a 30-hour work week was sometimes very common. He navigated through budgets, he helped mentor new council people, he helped build a lot of bridges, and, you know, I'll tell you what, he, you know, but I guess the first thing that Jim and I really did was after our May 31st tragedy. You know, Jim and I shared a lot of the duties with the media and everything. I think we did combine about 80 interviews that weekend. And Jim and I, I think, kind of galvanized, galvanized us in a way, and we've been through COVID together, we've been through a lot of things as a council together. And I really think that, in a lot of ways, that our city and our council came through better than any city that I'm aware of because of the way we, as a council, have come together. And Jim was very influential, not only sitting here, but behind the scenes, building bridges, putting out small fires, and, you know, just the ultimate communicator. And, but once again, Jim, you set a standard, Louis, you set a standard, but the good news is, we continue that you're going to be in the community, we're going to be, not only former colleagues, but continue to be friends and family. Okay? So, we do have, you know, some business that we'll discuss on terms of, we get to do another replacement, but we can talk about this at the end when we're into council discussions and initiatives. Okay? So, at this point, Mr. DeHaney, if we could get forward with the city manager's briefing.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Kevin Kobasa from the Finance Department is going to give an update on our fiscal year 2021 interim financial reports.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
How are you doing?
Doing good. Welcome, Mayor, members of council. As the city manager said, I'll be here giving the preliminary results for the fiscal year 2021. As you may know, our fiscal year ends June 30th, but we keep our books open an extra 45 days after that. And then, once we close our books, it's about a two- or three-month process, putting together our annual report that we provide to our external auditors. But what I'm going to do here is just give you a preliminary results of where we are, not expecting these to change as we work through it, but there is, of course, that possibility as we go through revenue accruals, expenditure accruals, things like that. But just an overall of the general fund for where we're at, revenues, they finished just about $52 million over budget, about 5.5%. And expenditures were under budget by $117 million, or close to 9% compared to budget. And we'll go over in these next slides more detailed information about that. Looking at our major local revenues, like I said, they were over budget, local revenues about $54 million, majority of that coming from real estate, personal property tax and sales tax. So, as you may remember, as we were going for the FY '21 budget, we changed it as we began to get into the COVID, we reduced the revenue budget by about $67 million, thinking there were going to be lower collections in property tax, real estate, but I'm proud to say that those collections still remained high. Sales tax continued to outperform what was budgeted. So, even though we were in this pandemic for about 18 months here, we did still see the revenues coming in as they would. And I think it does show a good sign about how our local economy is still strong, even though we were going through this pandemic. So, like I said, real estate taxes were about $10 million over budget, personal property $19 million, and sales tax about $15 million. And also with that sales tax, that does include the change that the General Assembly had with online sales. So, a lot of that sales tax can be contributed to the sales tax that's now required for your online sales. Another important thing to notice here is on the other local taxes, about $6 million over budget. A lot of that has to do with the tax for deeds. So, seeing that, one of the big, strong housing market, we saw a lot more taxes coming in for deeds and trusts, so just an important thing to note as well. When we get to the expenditures, like I said, they were under budget by about 9%. We see a lot of it has to do with salary savings. Some of these savings contributed from the CARES Act, that we were able to use the public safety salaries and move them into the CARES Act. We also had savings related to debt service because of our refinancing of bonds, which was about $6 million in savings. And then, the transfer to schools was under budget by about $25 million, so that was the reversion amount that they reverted back to the city for $25 million for money that they did not use, and we'll get into that a little bit later as well. So, coming down to see how it all falls down into the fund balance, with the over-budget of revenue and the under-budget of expenditures, we ended with a $332 million general fund fund balance. When you take into account all the reservations, so these will be your school reversion funds, like I mentioned, this also includes the school revenue true-up, so as we know that whenever we exceed revenue for local taxes, we get to share that with the schools. So, the estimated schools revenue true-up is $30 million. And then, you have all your other reservations for fund balance, that was included in the '22 budget, bringing that unassigned fund balance down to $142 million. And as you can see on this chart, that is about 11.6% of the '22 revenue. So, that gets us right in line to your policy of the 8% to 12%. Gets us a little bit lower last year, and last year, of course, we wanted that higher fund balance as we were getting into the pandemic, and it's still a very strong fund balance that we have here. So, in summary, like I said, the revenue is $52 million over budget, a lot of that being because revenue, personal property tax collections continue to stay the course as they have been in prior year, and then our expenditures being under budget with your savings from the CARES Act with salaries, your debt service, and then your encumbrances at the end of the year. So, with that, we'll be back here a month to give, in a month, to give you an update for July and August of FY '22, back in October, and then back in December with our external auditors to give you the audited update for fiscal year '21.
Hey, thank you. Any questions? Yep, Guy.
Speaking of the CARES Act, is there a way to see, see these financials that sort of exclude the CARES Act effect?
Yeah, we can do that for you.
I would like to see that, just because I know that's a big, non-recurring.
Right, and the majority of that will be in the salaries, all the other operating expenses that we could got charged to the CARES Act, so your really difference will be about that $20 million in public safety salaries.
You don't even have to, you know, you can just write it, write it in the margin, I'd just like to see it.
Okay.
Hey, anyone else? Hey, thanks a bunch, good stuff. Your department is fantastic.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Very good.
Really good news.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, Kathy Warren and Dana Harmer from the Attorney's Office will present on the CPACE program at your request of Councilmember Bellucci.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. At the request of Councilwoman Bellucci, today we're presenting additional information regarding the potential establishment of a commercial property-assessed clean energy program, or CPACE, in the city of Virginia Beach. So, a presentation overview, during this presentation, we will talk about what CPACE is, what CPACE-eligible properties and projects are, options for administration of a CPACE program, steps for establishing a CPACE program and how the program works, benefits to the property owner, and then roles of the parties and potential next steps. So, what is CPACE? It's a financial program for clean energy, resiliency, stormwater management improvements to commercial properties. This program allows a commercial property owner to finance the upfront cost of energy or eligible improvements on a property, and then pay costs back over time through a voluntary assessment. An important piece to note here is a CPACE assessment is a debt on the property, meaning that the debt is tied to the property as opposed to the property owner. The CPACE assessment has the same priority status as local property taxes. So, some eligible CPACE properties include office or multifamily, which is defined as five-plus units, industrial, retail, hotel, to name a few. And then, some eligible projects can be heating and ventilation, lighting, water pumps, insulation, solar panels, motors, roof construction, and resiliency projects that reduce the impacts of water or wind-related events, such as the installation of floodproofing materials or raising your mechanical and electrical equipment. There are three ways that a locality can administer a program. First, the locality can administer their own program. This means that city staff would handle all of the elements of the program, including working with the borrower or the capital provider to collect and remit payments. Or the locality can issue an RFP to contract with a CPACE program administrator that does all of those pieces. Or finally, the locality can use a cooperative procurement process and contract with Virginia Pace Authority, or VPA, as the program administrator using the Loudoun County contract. The city of Norfolk did this, they elected this option as the easiest to administer and for the lowest cost to the city. So, the path forward to establish a CPACE program in the city looks like this. The city council would pass an enabling ordinance, the city then rides the Loudoun County program administrator, RFP, and contracts with Virginia Pace Authority, or VPA. VPA establishes a CPACE program guide that outlines the specifics of the program for our city, and then VPA markets and promotes the program and begins to administer the program on behalf of the city. How the program works. So, the property owner or borrower contact the program administrator and submit a pre-application to determine if their project is eligible for the program. An energy analysis is then completed to determine the estimated project savings of that project. A CPACE-registered capital provider and contractor are selected, and a final application is submitted with supportive documentation. Next, the borrower closes on their CPACE loan and executes a CPACE program agreement and initiates project construction. At this time, the borrower also obtains any necessary subordination agreements. CPACE lien certificate is recorded, and then, once the project is completed, the repayment of the CPACE loan begins with payments processed to the CPACE administrator or directly to the capital provider. Benefits to the property owner, 100% financing, low-cost, long-term financing, it can increase their cash flow, they experience, they can experience energy savings, they may experience an increase in property value, and this provides a path to replace equipment. The role of the program administrator is to be the point of contact for the city's CPACE program, to design, promote, and administer our program, to market the program and oversee the application process, to connect borrowers with capital providers, to provide annual reports to the city, and to collect a fee as part of the borrower's approved loan. And for the city's role, council would pass the enabling ordinance to create the program. We would then contract with the program administrator. The city then empowers a designee to sign all program agreements, along with the borrower and the capital provider, and in the event of borrower default, the city or the capital provider would enforce the lien in a similar manner as delinquent real estate taxes. So, the proposed next steps to establish a program in the city would be for city council to have a public hearing on the matter on September 21st. City council adopts an ordinance to create a CPACE program on October 5th. A copy of the draft ordinance was included in your Friday package. We then ride the Loudoun County contract for program administrator with VPA. VPA would then write our program guide for the program, using best practices of other Virginia localities, and then VPA implements the program on behalf of the city. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Bellucci, thank you for requesting this. Why don't you get it started, then we'll listen to Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Ms. Warren, I just want to thank you, as well as Mr. Adams, Mr. Harmer, and all the others who helped to prepare this presentation and have worked on considering the feasibility and desirability of this program. As you mentioned, it's been something that I've had an interest in and been an advocate for, for some time since I learned about the program. But I think the reasons are simple, and they're, and they're very relatable to everyone in our community. It's really, as I see it, a win-win-win. I think that the public wins because there's just simply no way that, in Virginia Beach, with the expenditures and liabilities that we have upcoming and stormwater and frankly, other resiliency improvements, that the expense, that the burden of that expense can be shouldered by the taxpayers by members of the community, so we need to really optimize every opportunity we can to engage the private sector in the, in the solution to the problems that we face long-term in Virginia Beach. But what it also does is provide access to private capital for our business community, small and large businesses, to promote economic interest, to promote economic activity, provide opportunities for people in Virginia Beach to expand and, and modernize, and, and then, you know, ultimately, it also makes properties more valuable. And all of this done through a third-party administrator at almost no cost to the taxpayer in Virginia Beach, and with very little impact on city staff. So, I mean, as I see it, it's energy efficiency, it's economic activity, it's resiliency improvements, all the things that are stated goals and interests of this council. And so, I think it's a really incredible program that presents a lot of opportunity for the, for the community at large, for those people who are contending with flooding and stormwater and resiliency issues, also those who have a stake, which we all do, in the economic outlook for our city. So, I just, I hope that members of council will consider it favorably, will distribute a copy of the resolution, and I welcome cosponsors if any of you would have an interest in that, and I look forward to your questions and discussions. And thank you again, thank you all so much.
Mr. Tower.
I would second Mr. Bellucci's remarks in thanking staff for putting this together. I think it's a great program, Mr. Bellucci's on the right track, I certainly would be happy to co-sponsor it. I am interested to, and I can see from the material that we have, Loudoun and Norfolk have signed up. Do we know how many other localities have signed up?
Dana, do you happen to know? We can get that follow-up information for you.
Is it less, less than 10, more than 10, or do you know?
I believe, yeah.
Around 10, okay.
But we'll get that list to you.
That's, that's fine, I just wanted to see, and have you heard any, any problems with this program? Are you aware of any downsides? Anybody said, well, we didn't realize this when we started?
Well, I will say that the administration of the project seems to be the piece that has matured the most over, say, the last five years, which, when it first rolled out, it looked like it was a very heavy government model, but as Loudoun and Fairfax have entered this space, they've been very, very forceful in moving it towards the third-party administrator, and then, we include in AG opinion in your package, just the two, I think, thorniest issues when you're lending money are addressed in that, and so, I think what they have done is sort of taken that work off of the government's sort of piece of it and put on the third-party and the capital. So, I think that's sort of where we've seen it move, and all of this seems pretty positive.
Okay, thanks, just wanted to.
Okay, and Rosemary, and then Mr..
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Bellucci for bringing this forward, and also the Habden Roads Planning District supports CPACE as well, so we certainly don't want to be left, left behind, and we want to be like Virginia Beach always is, out in front of things. So, thank you for doing that, you can count me as a cosponsor, and I've often said that government can't do it all, and a lot of times, we've got to engage the private sector to help with some of these very broad-based, huge problems, and this, this is a really good step with that. And maybe I missed, but who does, who does the financing?
So, there are several different capital providers that can provide the financing for the program. They have to go through that administrator to be certified in advance to participate, so it's completely private sector.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Let me make sure I understand what you just gave us there. The equipment or whatever it takes to provide the, the electricity and energy will be supplied by a private company, is that it?
So, if I'm the property owner and I want to upgrade my equipment, my HVAC equipment, for instance, I would go to the administrator of the program, in this case, we're recommending VPA, and I would submit a pre-application to make sure that I am eligible for the program. I would then work with VPA to find a contractor that's certified through the program and a capital provider, so a lender that's certified through the program. The lender provides the financing for my project, contractor puts it in, once I go through the certification process, everyone signs off, I then will pay that lender payments back, whatever the terms are of the agreement, until it is satisfied. At that time, the lien comes off the property.
All right, and in the meantime, is, is the city collecting the money to pay the vendor?
No, sir. So, the property owner can either pay the capital provider directly or the program administrator. The city does not have a role in the payments.
Okay. And so, in the event the user doesn't pay the bill?
So, in the defend, in the event of a default, that's when the city or the capital provider has a role in enforcing that lien.
So, if somebody's property value goes down, and the, the, it doesn't affect their ability to pay the bill?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? All right, Mr. Bellucci.
I think, Mr. Tower, well, no, I was just going to simply say, if you have no objection, Mr. Mayor, that Bill Nussbaum, who has worked with the Virginia Pace Authority, is here, and if no one has any, if you don't have any objection, I just would invite him to offer some reflections about, about his experience with the program throughout the Commonwealth, as well as, I would just point out that there are a number of, I think what you might describe as shovel-ready or very interested parties already who, who are ready to engage in the program right here in Virginia Beach. But, Mr. Nussbaum?
Yeah, please come forward, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Councilman Bellucci indicated, I'm Bill Nussbaum, and I'm a partner with Williams Mullen in, in the Norfolk office, but in full disclosure, I'm really here as a volunteer member of the Virginia Pace Authority, and member of its board of directors, and have been involved working with, to get CPACE launched throughout Virginia, really for the last five years or so. In answer to the question about how many jurisdictions have adopted CPACE ordinances, the number in, in Virginia right now is around 10 or 11. All, and I would say at least, I think, seven or eight of them have engaged the Virginia Pace Authority to be their program administrator. One or two haven't named a program administrator yet, and, and one up in Arlington, the first program named somebody else, and it's taken them about three or four years to close their first deal. But, we're, VPA is excited about the prospect of working with the world's largest resort city, and we are, have already had outreach from at least one waterfront hotel that was interested in doing upgrades and so forth using CPACE, and, you know, we, we're sure once the program gets up and running that there'll be numerous other opportunities. There are other projects that have, you know, that have already actually been completed that had expressed interest about using CPACE to us in, in, in the past, and with the legislation that the General Assembly just recently adopted, there's actually even an ability to sort of look back a limited number, a limited amount of time, I think, two years, and sort of refinance essentially your initial outlays using CPACE, so even some recently completed projects might be able to, to utilize CPACE here in the beach.
Okay, okay. Okay, Mr. Tower, do you have any?
I just was going to ask, welcome, Bill, it's great to see you.
Thank you.
The, the lien, I should have studied this more carefully and known myself, I'll ask you, I got you. Talk to us just quickly, explain about the enforcement of the lien, assuming there's a default.
Sure, this is a, this is a special assessment lien, so it's, it's like, I won't, I won't quite say like, like any other special assessment lien, but it's, it's a, it's a voluntary lien, as distinguished from ones that the city imposes, in that the, the property owner agrees to self, essentially self, have it self-imposed on his property. The, if the lien goes into default, the, the first line of. The, if the lien goes into default, the first line of collection, you know, would be for the capital provider itself to seek to, you know, recover the funds, you know, because there's still going to also be a contractual obligation to repay the, to repay it. If they don't, ultimately, it could be, it defaults to a situation comparable to real estate tax collections. The difference is, this is, it's, the default rate on CPACE is miniscule, because unlike a mortgage loan, where you would have the entire amount accelerated if you got in default, you know, they call your note, and the whole amount of, all the principal comes due, and there's not that same acceleration of the defaulted amount, you know, in CPACE. It's just the delinquent installments, you know. So if you're, you know, if you're two semi-annual real estate tax period payments behind on your special assessment lien payments, that's all that's in default. That's all that's collected, and the balance doesn't get accelerated. So, it's very easy for a first mortgage holder, for example, to step in and pay off the, any defaulted amount, and, because it's not a large number. And that's why nationwide in commercial PACE transactions, you know, there have been almost no, I can't, I won't say no, but very, very, very few instances where a locality has actually had to step in and conduct the collections, because the mortgage lenders, you know, usually step in and cure it.
Okay. Mr. Jones.
All right, so, let's say I do the program. And I pay that portion that amounts to my real estate taxes, but I don't pay that portion that amounts to the payment for your services, whatever it is. What happens?
Well, your, first, your capital provider, and capital provider is the term that we use in PACE, simply because there are banks who are the lenders, but there are also some so-called non-bank lenders, you know, that are in the lending, in the PACE lending process. So, that's a generic term. But, the capital provider would, you know, worst case, they'd sue you to try and collect from you. If they sue you and you don't pay, and they take judgment, then, of course, the judgment would also, you know, become a lien against any real estate that you owned. But, they would, they could also, at that point, if they still can't collect one way or the other, then they would be able to, they could, and I haven't seen the ordinance yet, so I'm speculating here as to exactly how Virginia Beach has drafted the ordinance. But, you know, certainly one variant of it, it would be that, at that point, the capital provider could turn to the city and ask the city to foreclose on the delinquent special assessment lien.
Would the city be a part of the foreclosure process?
If it came to that, which, as I say, is just extraordinarily rare nationally, if it came to that, it could be, yeah.
Yeah, what?
Well, yes, sir.
So, the city would be part of the foreclosure? Is that what you're saying?
If it came to that, yes. I mean, it's, ultimately, in the final analysis, the capital providers in this, in the industry are looking for the knowledge, I mean, they're collateral, they're not taking a mortgage. Their security is the special assessment lien. So, the lenders in this, in CPACE are looking for the knowledge that, in the very final analysis, that a locality which is, who the special assessment lien runs to would foreclose.
I guess what we're struggling here, Bill, is...
Sure.
If this becomes a part of a city collection process, I guess, what is the need for the city to be a part of collecting the bill for the provider? I guess, that's what I want to know. What is the, what is the, what is the need for the city to be a part of the collection? I can understand the city being involved in collecting the taxes.
Sure.
What I'm concerned about is, are we getting our, would we be getting ourselves in a position where we're agreeing to be a part of collecting for the provider, a private company that's providing a service, over and above what the amount of the real estate taxes are?
Mr. Jones, I guess what I'd prefer not to do is speculate as to how the ordinance is written, not having seen it. And I'd rather turn to Mr. Ingram to see if he's, can, or Mr. Harmeyer, to see if one of them can shed some light on this. I'm afraid I'm tap dancing around an answer that, to a question, that I just don't know the answer to, because I haven't seen it.
Dana is Minute Man Press.
And so, there's a model ordinance that is sort of the statewide template, if you will, we're building off of. So, the same language would be in ours, as in City of Norfolk, as in Loudon's. So, here's what it says as far as enforcement. "In the event of borrowers' default under the terms of the CPACE documents, the city shall enforce the CPACE lien for the amount of delinquent CPACE payments, penalties, interests, and any cost of collection in the same manner that a property tax lien against real property may be enforced. In the alternative, the city may assign the CPACE lien to the capital provider by executing a CPACE lien assignment and recording the assignment in the land records. Upon such assignment, the capital provider may enforce the CPACE lien according to the terms of the CPACE documents. All collection and enforcement costs, expenses, interests, and penalties incurred by the city or the capital provider, as applicable and consistent with the CPACE Act, shall be added to the delinquent payments being collected, become a part of the aggregate amount sued for and collected, be added to the CPACE loan, and be secured by the CPACE lien. Nothing herein shall prevent the capital provider from enforcing the CPACE lien to the fullest extent permitted by the CPACE documents, the CPACE Act, or general law."
So, in answer, so the short summary of, excuse me, I'm sorry. Getting used to this again. The short summary of what Dana read is that the city has the option of assigning the lien to the capital provider and let the capital provider go pursue the defaulted borrower itself and leave the city out of it, which I think is the result that you were hoping to hear ultimately.
Ms. Wilson, and then Mr. Wood.
Thank you for being here today. Can you give us some examples, some projects that have come under this program?
Sure. And the, you know, they range from modest programs for nonprofits, which are eligible, even though, even if their property is exempt from paying property taxes, as long as it is assessed, and nonprofits' property does get assessed, as long as it's assessed, it's eligible for CPACE. So, it could be from nonprofits to, really to, you know, any for-business project hotels have been, office buildings have used CPACE. Even been a few multifamily housing projects in other jurisdictions, you know, other states or in DC that have used it. In fact, DC United's soccer stadium used CPACE, which was one of the cooler projects that had utilized it. I mean, you know, had we had this in place a year or two ago, the, you know, the sports facility that went down on 19th Street, you know, could have used it, for example. The, so that's sort of a range of properties. I know of a project that's under consideration in one jurisdiction that's already adopted a CPACE ordinance, where it's a large, you know, 30 or 40-year-old warehouse, and they're putting $500,000 worth of solar panels on the roof. The warehouse is actually, is privately owned, but it's leased to the locality for storage, and the locality is actually going to buy the power generated by those solar panels and use it itself. So, it's part and parcel of their lease, as an amendment to their lease, which was particularly, again, a neat project and shows a lot of the types of creativity that you can have in structuring CPACE.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thanks. I wanted to go back to the question that Mr. Jones had. So, just to confirm, this is not a tax lien. It doesn't stand, it doesn't get in front of the city's lien on a property for taxes, correct?
It's pari passu, it's even with it. It's not, you know, unless there's anything, again, turning back to Dana, unless there's anything different in this ordinance, and it doesn't sound like it, because he made reference to the model ordinance that they generally were following, generally speaking, it's on a par with the real estate taxes. And it comes ahead of the first mortgage, like real estate taxes do, but, which is why the statute requires the first mortgage lender to subordinate to it, just to make it official.
It does require subordination.
Yeah, from the lender, from your mortgage lender.
So, and this may be a question for Dana, is there possibility to enact an ordinance where it is not on par?
I'll let Dana answer that, and then I'll lend some historical background on that
So, the enabling legislation's what we kind of have to look to. And with regard to the special assessment lien, it says it shall have the same priority status as a property tax lien against real property. So, I don't think we have any discretion to do otherwise.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thanks a bunch, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And you mentioned the size of Virginia Beach. I think it was in the paper today with the census that are up to 460,000 people right now.
That is correct.
You got it, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, Mr. DeHaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Police Chief Nidiket will give an update on the crime stats and also staffing and the technology updates and the investments that council have made in the last budget in the police department.
Welcome, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to come in and spend a few minutes updating council in regards to our current crime stats, technology initiatives, and where we are in regards to staffing and retention. Also with me today is Deputy Chief C. Adams, in charge of operations, and Lieutenant Brad Wesler, in case we do have questions. So, I want to take a look at crime stats from the first of the year through August 22nd, this past Sunday. And we will start with property crime. On the left will be the three-year average. The middle bar will, of course, be 2020. And the far bar, far on the right, will be year-to-date. So, as you can see, when it comes to commercial burglary, we are down 60%. We attribute a lot of that to last year, when we had COVID, people were not out moving around, we had a lot of vacant properties. As a result, we had a lot of commercial burglaries. Now that we have kind of turned tide with COVID, we all hope we are seeing drastic reductions. Residential burglaries, still down slightly. If I can point out, they are significantly down both years compared to the three-year The one area where we are seeing an uptick is theft of motor vehicles. So, we're doing a deep dive into what that looks like. We have seen a rash of theft of motor vehicles from dealerships along Virginia Beach Boulevard. So, our team is reaching out to the numerous dealerships to see what we can do from a problem-solving perspective, to help them maybe target harden or take some additional steps to reduce the number of thefts, but we have seen quite a few in the last few weeks. Theft from motor vehicles are back to the average. I think they went down last year, probably just due to the fact that there are less vehicles on the road, less opportunity, so we did see a decrease, and we have just regressed back to the median. Another bright spot, all other thefts, which would be your retail thefts, if you leave your phone on the counter at a bar and you walk away to go to the bathroom and someone takes it, that would be classified as another theft. And as you can see, significant reduction from 2020, as well as the three-year average. Violent crime. Rapes are down considerably from this time last year and from the three-year average. Robberies up slightly compared to this time last year, but still down from the 109 that we see as the three-year average. Aggravated assaults, down almost 10%, and well below the three-year average of 203 offenses.
Chief, can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
When you're talking three-year average, what three years are we talking about?
Sir, we are using 18, 19, and 20. Criminal homicides, we are down 16%, well below the 14. And of the 10 that are, that we have currently, we have solved eight of those. So, right now, we have an 80% successful closure rate. The average nationwide varies between 60 and 64%. So, our homicide folks are doing an incredible job of making sure that they are freeing closure and justice to many of these families when they do lose a loved one. Shooting. We're very lucky that, a lot of good work, a lot of changes in the police department, that we have reduced the shootings from last year. I think the one area is still higher than the three-year average. So, there is work to be done. But, to put it in perspective, this gives you an idea of where they are occurring by precinct. So, the Third Precinct is the only one that is actually seeing an increase, I would like to point out. Second Precinct, 21 shooting incidents as of this time last year, 17 this year, and that is including the multi-casually incident that we had on March 26 with nine shooting victims. So, even with that singular incident, Second Precinct is still lower than the numbers we had at this time last year. So, we, I asked analytical services to break it out by zones and not just communities. So, the two zones that are truly driving our shooting violence are 227, which is the oceanfront, and then 326, which is Western Bayside. So, to put that in perspective, here is a map of shooting victims year-to-date, and it just reflects what we just saw in the previous slide. Oceanfront, 227, and the significant clustering that we have in Lake Edward, Western Bayside, in the 326 zone. That is where the overwhelming majority of our shooting offenses are occurring, and that is where we have been focusing our efforts to disrupt this spatial clustering.
Chief, could you tell me what's in that zone? What identifier, buildings or schools or something? Just want to make sure I know what it is.
I'll get you that, Mr. Tower, that I don't have that specific knowledge at this point.
I can tell pretty much, actually, from, I can, I can't see that map very well from here. I see it's in my package.
Unfortunately, is in the Lake Edwards community, drives a lot of that.
I got it.
The good news, this was year-to-date. This is where we look for the last 56 days. As you can tell, that we've had significant clustering. We really started off, not in a good way at the beginning of the year, but we have really refocused our efforts on addressing violent crime. Our new, you know, we've talked about waves. I presented waves to the council. It is a strong focus on those Part I crimes. We've restructured our community-oriented policing squads and renamed them to community crime suppression squads, retasked them with a focus, a strong focus, on reducing violent crime, along with some other initiatives. And I definitely think that is paying dividends for us. So what we have here is a rolling timeline. So what it will show you is, the red is year-to-date. The blue is the three-year average, and the green is where we were at the same time last year. So you can see when we had the incident at the Oceanfront on March 26, we were definitely outside the norm, above the standard deviation. We have since regressed back to that, not just the mean, but we were well below the three-year average and significantly lower than the amount of shooting violence that was occurring in the city of Virginia Beach at the same time last year. So what I wanted to do is, you know, we hear about violence. We are, no doubt, and the data shows it, the safest big city. And I know we hear that a lot, but I don't think that we can emphasize and state that enough. So what we want to do is take a look at some other cities our size, where they are in regards to their violence. So this comes from the Major City Chiefs Association. This is the first six months. So it is not year-to-date, but I think it does give us a very good comparison. So that when we look at seven other cities in the range of 400 to 500,000 residents, and now that we're up to 460, so it puts us right in the middle. For the first six months, we are the lowest city for rape offenders.
I see Cincinnati on there.
They're not lucky enough to have over 400,000 residents, Vice Mayor, so unfortunately, we excluded them.
460.
Yes, sir.
I figured since you left, it was going to be like super high in the dimension.
That is true. Well, since the manager and I left, I think their numbers have went up drastically. I'll let you draw your own conclusions, Vice Mayor. So, yes, sir. So out of the seven cities, Virginia Beach lowest for six months. We look at robberies, Virginia Beach, once again, out of the comparison cities, the lowest on record. Aggravated assaults, a fraction of what some of these other similar cities have in regards to what we have. Homicides, we were at nine at the time of this report, much lower than just about, definitely lower than all the other cities. Total violent crime, 275 offenses. You know, and I hate to cast aspersions in other cities, but when you look at Oakland, Minneapolis, Kansas City, I think we have to remember how good we actually do have it in the beach. And we have to work every day to make sure that we keep these numbers exactly where they are. Council member.
Yes.
Define homicide.
Homicide, or this is the unlawful taking of another life. So these are criminal homicides. A homicide can also be justified. And actually, these are what we would call murders. So one of these, when we go back, council member, we actually have 10 year-to-date. But one of the ones that we have on the books right now, we believe the Commonwealth attorney is going to decline to prosecute, that it will be a justifiable homicide. So that will come off, we'll still record it, but it won't be reported out as a criminal homicide.
So this is showing criminal homicides?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that difference.
Yes, ma'am. And I think that's a, homicide is a legal term, but they can also, you know, it can be an illegal action with the plethora of laws that are on the books, the stand-your-ground laws and some of the numerous things that have changed. Cities in Virginia Beach is not exempt. We do see legally justified homicides that occur in the beach. Technology. Council was gracious enough, and we are very, very appreciative of that, that you allotted funding for 42 brand-new cameras to fill in the gaps for us at the Oceanfront. To date, 22 cameras have been installed, and we are looking for those remaining 20 cameras that will be installed after Labor Day. ShotSpotter. I think, find it's very interesting that we went live in the second precinct, covering all of the resort area and up into Atlantis and some other areas on July 14th, two square miles. To date, at the Oceanfront, we have had two activations. So averaging 20 days in between. So I think it goes back to, and yes, we have had some violence at the Oceanfront, but we are making incredible steps to mitigate it and negate that activity. And while we are addressing that, we also have to address the perception that sometimes is out there, that we have routine gunfire activity at a resort area.
Do it by sound, or how does it do it, Chief?
Yes, sir. It's triggered by the impulsion of a, of the firearm. That when it detects it, there are sensors down there, they triangulate it. So when they hear an activation that is very similar to gunfire, that will go to Newark, California. They run it through a machine algorithm. Says, yes, we believe this is gunfire. Then they put human ears on it as well. The human quotient says, yes, we also believe it's gunfire. And then they send it out to our officers. And that usually happens within 45 to 60 seconds. And where this is very important, there's two activations that we know that we had because we recovered shell casings. We did not get a 911 call. So the only reason we responded to those two incidents is because we have the technology. So the second area is, of course, Western Bayside. ShotSpotter is out there right now, working to get those sensors identified, located, and get that online. And we're hopeful that that will come to fruition within the next 60 days or so.
What's magic about the two square miles? That's the range that it covers, or?
One, we want to be very judicious with council and the public's money. So the coverage area is predicated on data. So when we look at three to five years of homicides, shots fired incidents, shootings, and robberies, they give us a preferred location, and that was the location that they came up with. It used to be with ShotSpotter, they would only deploy in a contiguous group of three square miles, but they've since altered their business plan. And I think, from what I've seen, the two square miles right now is exactly where we need to be with both locations. If that would change, then I think it's definitely worthy of a conversation about expansion. But I think what we are, we have entered into an agreement with right now for those two square miles is exactly where we need to be. Council member Rouse.
Yes, Chief, thank you. So according to, does this square miles coincide, those two square miles coincide with the maps where we have the shootings in Western Bayside?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I'd be more than happy to share that with you offline. I just don't want to put it out in the public domain.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else at this point?
Body cameras, signal sidearm. Pleased to announce, I, all officers, try not to make it repetitive, but every one of us now have access to a body-worn camera if we need it. And we're going to be in an operational assignment. We will be transitioning to the new Axon Body 3 as part of the contract that we've signed with Axon over the next several years. The new model will give us some better BWC and video quality. So when we are capturing those videos, it's going to show it in much greater detail. Fleet in-car cameras. We have 250 approximate mark patrol vehicles. We have not had mobile video recorders in those cars. You know, the staff tells me that it's been several years since we've had them, probably five or six years, C. So we're very glad that we have ventured back into, not only the body cams, but putting the mobile video recorders into the vehicles, because we do know that is a source of concern with our community. Traffic stops and disparities around traffic stops and what that looks like. We want to capture that because we want to ensure that we're treating the public fairly and that we have an accurate recording of what that looks like. So to date, we have 19 vehicles out there with mobile video recorders. We have 11 that are getting outfitted right now. Those are the Fleet 2s. There's a new generation that we're supposed to start receiving in October. So we're waiting to install them in the rest of the fleet until those new cameras come in, so we don't have to go back and take out the Fleet 2s and upgrade. It is our hope that sometime by the end of the year and early next year, that we will have mobile video recorders in all 250 cars. Signal sidearms. Been in front of this body. I think we know the challenges that we had. Regardless of how we got there, what I can say is that Axon was very, very gracious, once again, identifying that our existing holster would not work with the existing technology they purchased and provided to your police department at no cost, about $90,000 worth of brand-new Safari Land holsters. They sent representatives out here with the new holsters in hand, with the sidearm bracket, mounted them, tested them, to make sure that that Bluetooth technology is currently working at this time. As of right now, it is a transitional rollout. 355 holsters are deployed. So by the end of the year, we will have the new holsters and technology on all of our officers. The only thing that I caution, with anything that is technological, I think we all know when we get in the car, and sometimes the Bluetooth doesn't sync as quickly or as often as we'd like. It is still technology. We are relying on technology, trying to implement technology that will take the human quotient and human decision-making out of it. But, but nothing is perfect. I just caution that we remember that as we move forward. NiBEN, I think this is going to be huge for this police department, is the ability that anytime we recover a firearm, anytime we recover shell casings, within what will be 96 hours is going to be my mandate, because that is kind of the ATF mandated time, that within 48 hours from the time we recover a firearm, we will test-fire it, we will enter it into our own NiBEN machine, and then 48 hours later, we should have a result or a correlation back. And what that will do is tell us any and all offenses that that firearm or those shell casings have ever been involved in. So many times, you know, we go back, we saw the big difference between the clustering that we had in the 227 zone at the Oceanfront and what we look like the last 56 days. Captain McBrien and his team have done a spectacular job. Since mid-April, since we developed a dedicated strategy, his team have taken over 100 firearms out of that resort area and the surrounding periphery. Every one of those guns, we're charging individuals with a companion criminal offense. But because unfortunately, right now, we rely on the state lab, which takes four to six months to give us a result to tell us if it's involved in another crime. My gut tells me, my experience tells me, if you're illegally carrying a firearm or using it, it's not the first time. That gun's been involved in other crimes. We want to have that conversation. So we're going to cut it from four to six months to hopefully 96 hours. And I think this will be a game changer for VVPD.
Fantastic.
Yes, ma'am.
Really fantastic.
Another one where we can't thank council enough for believing in us and providing the money for what we believe was an absolutely critical acquisition is the box. Centered in between the chemistry and, I believe, the sandbar has been a constant source of angst for the police department and I think the community, just from the number of calls for disorder. So there is the new box. It is the Virginia Beach Police Department Substation. We took ownership in July. Building maintenance was nice enough to go in and do a temporary overhaul for us to make it inhabitable. Once the event season is over, they're going to go back in and really redo it, that we can truly use it as a 24/7 mobile substation for the police department and any other city departments that have a need moving forward and going into next year's summer season. And just some pictures. I think some of you may have seen them on social media. But we are doing our best to really avail ourselves of that property and make sure that it is seen as, you know, that police, you know, that next piece of the police puzzle that we need in that area. And that instead of the quality of life issues and the displacement, that we see a true diffusion of benefits, which is the good coming from that that starts to override some of the quality of life concerns.
How long is it going to be closed?
I'll get you an answer. Hopefully, it won't be long. I think what we're looking to do is do that, you know, right in the coldest weather months, if our other city partners can accommodate it, so that we don't vacate that presence for long. Council, once again, I thank you, gracious enough to allocate us a significant pot of money to start looking at some crime prevention through environmental design issues at the resort area. Right now, your resort liaison officers are focusing on 15th through the 25th Street corridor. They're developing a plan on how to wisely spend that money moving forward. But in the interim, they're not resting on their laurels. They have been out, boots on the ground. And I have to thank the following departments, because it's not just the PD. This is a citywide effort, a citywide initiative, to really reclaim some of these areas. Zoning, landscape management, code enforcement, traffic engineering, have all been out there, boots on the ground with us, and we appreciate their efforts. You know, these are just some of the things that not directly crime, but they contribute to crime. So here's 15th Street. Here was 18th Street before they went in and rectified some lighting conditions. Those are a couple areas that we're focusing on. You know, just some of the other simple ones. If I can direct your attention up to the left-hand side of the screen, you can see one of our public parking lots. You see the foliage all overgrown. One of the things that we found out is individuals, I think, in a direct result to some of the increased attention that we were providing down there, were starting to stash their firearms in the foliage. I think we have found anywhere from 15 to 20 firearms in some of the foliage around some of our public parking lots. So we worked with our other city partners to cut that all down, to take that, that advantage away from some of the individuals that may want to visit the resort area and stash firearms. So these are just some of the things that, not everything is crime-related, but it is also quality of life, and that's what our resort liaison officers have been tasked with. Once we finish that, we're doing their best to identify specific projects for the funding that this body allocated, and then they will move on to the 25th and 42nd Streets. Staffing and recruiting update. We are authorized 807. We stand at 47 current unfilled vacancies. 48 recruits started, or I'm sorry. We started with 54 recruits July 17th, I believe it was.
Never had that.
And unfortunately, we have lost six. But we have been holding steady. Very glad to announce that all of them just passed their legal exam, which I was told is one of the more challenging academic assignments that they have. So they've cleared one major hurdle, and we're very hopeful that we're going to graduate all 48. With that said, that still leaves us 95 operational vacancies. And you see the good work that's occurring, and that good work is being done with significant vacancies in these, these preferred assignments that are all critical to this police department and this city. You know, traffic, crime suppression, homicide, SWAT, special investigations, our special victims unit, and several others are all under complement. Unfortunately, we are filling many of these through overtime because of the position vacancies that we have, but we know it's not sustainable. vacancies that we have, but we know it's not sustainable. And that's why we're working very, very hard. And we attribute a lot of this, and we give credit to Ms. Julie Hill and her team. They've really developed this new do-more, have-more, be-more initiative for the PD. And I think between Ms. Hill's team, and I have to give a shout-out to Captain Spivey and the recruiting team down there, they have really embraced this. We gave them free rein to run, come to us with some innovative ideas, and I do think it's working. And why do I think it's working? Testing applicants. We've doubled the number this year compared to years previous. And the number that you see in the preceding years, those are full years. Those are not just year-to-date. So we are doing significantly better than probably a lot of other agencies in attracting people to come take our test. I think, once again, I thank this body. I think the measure of support that you provided this PD with the recent increases in salary have definitely played well into attracting folks. It's already a great department, and you made it even better by telling them that you believe in these folks. Just some information, we give them all a survey, everyone that applies and goes through the testing process. Moving to more of an internet, social media recruiting technology, and unfortunately, it seems that the days of recruiting booths and going away are just not attracting people to this profession. It really is more of a technology-based recruiting effort, and I think that's playing out, that website, internet, social media is where we're finding our applicants.
And Chief, Mr. Mayor, your command staff has a Twitter game like nobody else. I mean, they are hot on Twitter, and every day, they're posting something, so they've got a lot going on with that that's paying off.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate you noticing because I think we take pride that we've really stepped up our social media game because historically, law enforcement, we're not very good about branding ourselves or selling ourselves, even though there is great work being done on a daily basis. And what I challenge them, and they've stepped up and ways surpassed, is every day, show them the great work that this organization is doing.
It's awesome.
I thank you, councilmember.
Is that Twitter handle available? I'm not sure.
Oh, he's got the whole command staff, all of them out on Twitter and everything. They're dropping something every day. It's good.
You know, when I get Deputy Chief Adams on there, the tide has turned.
I see him laughing back there. I didn't want to say anything.
So I think there is also to point out that these are some of the tentative demographics of the people that are applying, and it does seem to be a very diverse group, which I think we can all appreciate and welcome. As well as female, we're looking at twenty percent female, twenty-seven percent female applicants. Another one, I thank the manager, I thank council. We announced the five-thousand-dollar hiring bonus, as well as the fact that, say, we did recruit some officers from other departments in or out of this region. Instead of starting them at the base pay, we made the determination that we need to start them equivalent with the years of service that they have in law enforcement.
And that endeared me to some of the other mayors. Thank you.
And police chiefs, yes, sir. I feel your pain, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but we love it.
Oh, well.
So as you can see, it has been a huge hit for us. We had ten certified laterals apply prior to making that announcement and that change, and we've had fifty since. And I believe it's our goal, all these individuals, even though they're certified laterals, if you want to be part of the beach, you still have to go through our background and selection process to make sure that you are a good fit for this department. And as we vet those individuals out, you know, we're hopeful that we may take fifteen or twenty that will fit in with the beach and it'll help some of these recruiting issues.
Great, outstanding.
And then another one that incredibly proud of, and this went live yesterday, is thanks to council, once again, you funded something that I know has been a wish even before I got here and been in the works, is a cadet program, to really hold on to our youth from the time that they graduate from high school, provide them a meaningful wage, immerse them in this great organization until they're eligible to take that test. So we really are looking to develop that farm-team approach. And I know there's other things the manager and I have discussed about working with our school system to maybe look at a public safety academy in the future, but right now, we want to really flesh out and make this a, you know, the stellar cadet program, probably in not just the region, but maybe the nation. So it posted. We're going to do tentative interview dates end of September, make those first hires in October. I'm going to start out with ten, really refine the process and the program, and then I believe there is funding for us to increase that. But I think that is the piece that we really needed to really touch some of our youth, especially in those formative years, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wood, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Henley.
Thanks. Chief, I would echo what Councilmember Holcomb said. The social media is just phenomenal. I've seen Deputy Chiefs Adams tweets on there, and I guess he figured out that Twitter's on the computer, which is cool for him. But it's your entire command staff, which is really good, and I just look to see inevitably, the first thing that comes across Twitter is a VBPD thing, and it's really good. I mean, I can't open Twitter without seeing an update from you guys, and I think that's phenomenal. And I got to tell you, I think also, we talk about the gun crimes and things like that, you know, inevitably, one of those tweets is a picture of a bunch of guns that you've taken off somebody who has stolen them, or they're illegally possessed, or they've been used in a crime, and I think that helps. I mean, I think people seeing that happening is great, and, you know, on Facebook, yeah, you've got mugshots of scary-looking people with guns and everything like that, and I think that's great. You're showing that y'all are out there, are doing the work. About staffing, so fifty certified, so your target for your certified mini-academy is only fifteen?
I would say we're looking fifteen to twenty. We want to make sure that we're bringing the right people into this organization. Maybe all fifty are the right people. I don't want to go out there and say that we're going to be able to bring fifty and fill that significant gap right now. I think we bring in the people that pass the background test and are a good fit for this organization.
So without inflaming the region, can you tell me how many are from this area versus outside the region?
From the region, I would say ninety percent are from the region. Very few are from outside of-- there's a few from North Virginia, and probably three or four from outside the state.
Okay. And then, because I know there appear to be some morale issues in neighboring cities that may add to some of these recruitments. And talking about the cadets, how many cadets do you plan to have?
Right now, we're going to start with ten. I believe the funding allocates us for up to twenty-five.
Okay. And how long would they be in that program?
They will be in, could be up to three years if we can entice them into this organization as a cadet. Once they graduate, they could be here for up to three years with the commitment and obligation that they have to test at the first available opportunity.
And is there a requirement or incentive for them to go to school while they're doing this?
Absolutely. I mean, and that's come up, that we would work with them and make it a flexible schedule while they would want to pursue any secondary advanced education.
Right. I wanted to talk a little bit about the technology. So the in-car camera, is there audio attached to that or no?
Yes, sir.
There is audio?
I believe so, sir.
Okay. So there'd be something else for them to wear when they get out?
No, I believe it's activated in the car. It captures the audio. And one of the nice things, and I forgot to mention, when we talk about utilizing the technology to take that human, you know, computation out of it, the way that the MVRs are working now, the way Captain Zelm's has set them up, of course, you activate your emergency lights, it activates both cameras, your personal body cam.
So it does activate the body camera?
Yes, sir. And the mobile video recorder. If we have to release our carbine because it's an active shooter incident or something, that will also activate both. If we open the rear passenger door under the presumption that we have a prisoner and putting a prisoner in the car, activates the cameras.
So in terms of the new body-worn cameras, what's the buffering on those?
It is now two minutes, which is the fully allotted time that Axon has. That was a recent software upgrade. Until they made that upgrade and came to our attention, it was a thirty-second buffer. So the command staff, ultimately myself, made the determination that we're going to avail ourselves of that full two-minute buffer, and we made the change in policy.
So then my final question is, so you talk about the human piece of this, that all these things could not occur, or a situation would happen where some of these things did not occur, but the body camera should still be activated because, you know, maybe away from a car or something like that. Are the recruits now outfitted with body cameras initially, so they're learning that early on?
They better be. So that was the direction, is, came to our attention that, for whatever reason, that the body cams were being issued in that very last phase, the last couple of weeks, which I personally don't think immerses them in the full twenty-six-week experience. So the direction to the staff that they've complied with is, we're going to issue those body cams when we issue the body armor and the gun belt and everything else. So as they go through the full twenty-six-week academy--
They're going to be used to it.
They're going to, all their scenarios, everything that they do is now ingraining the use of that body cam.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, and then Ms. Henley, and then Mr. Jones.
I'll be very brief.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
But I think this is absolutely fantastic, incredible report.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so proud of you and all of our men and women in the blue. And, you know, you, while we were sitting here, Wavy TV did a thing, there was a fatal shooting in Norfolk. And it seemed like we were having a lot at once, but when you really look at the data, we really are much, much lower, so it's really nice to see it. And since I've been on council, these are the lowest vacancies I've seen. It's always at least a hundred or more. So this is all really, really great news, and just would like to see if we could get this in electronic format.
Absolutely.
So we can share it with others because it's a great report. Y'all have done a wonderful job, and I couldn't be more proud of you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Okay, Ms. Henley, and then Mr. Jones.
Oh, the building next door, how is that progressing, and where do you see that in your timeframe of working with the department here?
Correct. Yeah. So Councilmember Henley, we're going to give a briefing on that on the first or the second week of September to give you an update on that, but I think everything's progressing on schedule, and they added the additional money that council added for the real-time crime center as well as part of the design. But we should have a thorough briefing on the new city hall and the rest of the municipal complex in early September.
I think you had envisioned an area in there that particularly allowed for the technology and so forth. I think we included that in your wish list.
Absolutely, ma'am, and the manager has alluded that you funded the build-out of that real-time crime center that will encapsulate all these technology initiatives that we have, that we will have a dedicated group. And what I envision and what is best practice is usually that is a combination of sworn officers as well as civilian intelligence analysts, that they will come together, man that twenty-four-seven or close to it as possible operations hub that will be responsible for the niibin, the shot spotter, the license plate reader technology, once we get, the good councilmember that's not here asked for--
Moss.
Yes. He wants to make sure that, you know, we're going to employ the technology correctly. So we're working on that. You know, the social media monitoring, the social network analysis, the monitoring of all the camera expansions. So, yes, we're very eager to move into the new building and really stand up a true real-time crime center for the city of Virginia Beach that will be that true operations hub for the PD. But what I really envision, it'll be an operations hub for the manager, city administration, and this body, that as things occur and we're getting that real-time information, that we'll be funneling out to everyone.
Well, I hope you'll really keep us up on that--
Yes, ma'am.
--because I think that's a great step forward for all of this to come together, and it looks like you've put it to good use. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I thank you for your report, but that's not what I really wanted to address. I was walking out of one of my buildings today and went out to the front of it, and when I went out, there was an elderly fellow laying on the sidewalk who was obviously either, I don't think he was drunk, I think he was just weak, is what it was. And as I came out of the building, and two or three other people that work for me were with me, one of your police cars pulled up. Young lady, police officer, got out of the car, walked over to the fellow, sat down on the grass next to him, pulled out two sandwiches and a drink for each one of them, and sat there and had the, shared her sandwiches with this fellow, this man. And I thought it was a great act of compassion, and I just want you to know that you've got police officers out there doing that sort of thing.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. It touches me to hear that, and I think it goes back to the great work. You know, it's not me, it's not my command staff. What is making this work are the great men and women at that line level that go out and serve this community every day with your support.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Mr. Belucci.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate you being here and for the presentation you shared with us. And, you know, I'll just echo the comments that were made by others about, you know, the amount of respect that I have and appreciation for you and for the men and women who work and serve in the police department and all the great work they do, which results in the statistics that we saw just a few moments ago that demonstrate Virginia Beach is one of the safest communities in America. So thanks for your hard work on there. I'd like to ask a question, but before I do, I just want to also just offer a, just a comment on something that Vice Mayor Wood mentioned, which was, I'm seeing the same things on social media, and in particular about firearms and so many of the illegal firearms, for lack of a better word, I think, illegal firearms that your teams are taking off the streets. You know, and we're, in our country today, we talk so often about violence that relates to firearms, and I think it's not lost on me, and I wonder if you'd have any comment on this, but I think one of the critical ingredients about reducing violence that's associated with firearms is getting guns, illegal guns, out of the hands of people who shouldn't have them. And if we're able to accomplish that, we'll be a lot further along in terms of reducing acts of violence that include firearms. And I think what we're seeing is a demonstration of, and the results of a lot of really hard and strategic work that's being done in that area, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I think is one of the things that you're known for professionally.
I have some experience in that, yes, sir.
Yeah, and so I just want to just thank you for that and just let you know that that fact is not lost on me and the role that it plays in reducing firearm-related violence. But I also want to ask a question about reporting.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, I know through some of the work that I've done outside of city council that certain crimes have low rates of reporting, or lower rates of reporting, including bias-motivated crimes, including crimes that are related to domestic incidents, including rape. And, of course, one of the ingredients that has to occur in order for, I guess, robust reporting to happen is that there has to be sort of trust, and that's something that we're always striving toward building and enhancing. And also, well, I mean, I think that's probably one of the most important ingredients, but what are your thoughts about the frequency or the incidence of levels of comfort with reporting crimes in Virginia Beach? And is there anything specific you're doing to increase or enhance crime reporting?
Absolutely, and we know crime is under-reported. I mean, that's factual, every city. That's why one of the big indicators that we rely on is some of the most accurate stats are going to be our homicides and probably our shooting offenses, because almost every one of those is going to end up coming to the police's attention in some manner. So those are really the ones, and, you know, when we talk about homicides, we want to make sure that's a priority, but the really true tell-- make sure that's a priority, but the really true tell of how we're doing as a community is the overall shooting violence, because every one of those is a potential homicide. So in regard to those other crimes, especially the rape offenses, under-reported, we know that certain segments of our community don't have a lot of trust in the police. We know the Hispanic community, which we have quite a few, does not necessarily trust the police to come forward. We know a lot of times, there's some lack of trust in the government, and they carry large sums of money, which makes them easy victims. And I think that's one of the, you know, we've really stood up our outreach to our Hispanic population. Master Police Officer David Nias was down July 4th, we had a Hispanic tent down there. He has come up with dedicated monthly programming for Hispanic community. I know we were just out at Colony Trailer, and we are looking to have our second-ever Hispanic Police Academy come October or November, to really start to develop that trust that all we care about is that they bring us the reported crime and allow us to serve them as we would any other citizen.
Can I just follow up on that, because I think you hit on something that's important to a lot of people. In Virginia Beach, can you clarify the policy about how, or your interest in someone's immigration status if they report a crime?
We don't care about their immigration status, council member. Our job is to serve anyone that's in the boundaries of this city.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Chief, I just want to say, you know, first of all, when it comes to social media, there's days I want my beeper back. You know, it's an old-new world to us people that remember, leave it to Beaver on first run. But let me just say, if there's one word that I think that described you as omnipresent, you know, is a mountain about a lot, you are definitely out and part of the community, attending multiple events. I highlight one event a couple Sundays ago, it was a minority, small minority church, one of the strip mall places, it was Indian River Road, almost near Norfolk, but you were out there on a day, it was 100 degrees, with about a dozen elderly people, and you stayed pretty much an hour. And you spoke to a young gentleman there, a minority gentleman who's in the Navy, he was up in Mechanicsburg looking forward to retirement, and you pretty much had him all ready to sign up and come on the PD, didn't you?
He emailed me, we've got him in touch with recruiting, and I'm hopeful that we're going to have him to the ranks.
Yeah, but I'm just saying...
Always a recruiter.
And, you know, but once again, the presence at community activities, I was at one where there was a police dog demonstration at Pembroke that was phenomenal. And then you have an officer that works with the skateboard community, and he put on a demonstration in full flak jacket and gear and everything, you had the SWAT teams out there. You've been into a number of community events. I was, I did a ribbon cutting at Pembroke, you were just in the building, just happened to be there. And I think it really just shows the presence and the leadership, and I think it's been reflective, you know, that, you know, you have a council that is 100% confident. And in talking to a number of the other mayors, they're not really enjoying some of the success, you know, that we're having with our trends. But once again, I think, you know, a special thank you to all the men and women that serve, you know, and doing that, and, you know, it takes a lot of work to stay the safest city, and I just want to commend you for it. Anybody else at this point?
Thank you ma'am.
Okay, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeHaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, the planning director, Bobby Dehan, will give you a planning glimpse for the next items that come to your council meeting for your decision.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. Bobby Dehan and I are here, and we'll give you a real quick overview of the planning items that we have scheduled for you in September. There are 10 land use applications that are scheduled for September 7th, and then you have two applications that, one was deferred, and one is a reconsideration of the zoning ordinance amendments related to short-term rentals. The first application on the 7th was deferred at the applicant's request back in 2019 in order to provide additional time to remove items that were encroaching in the right-of-way beyond the area that was proposed to be closed. And due to the pandemic, there was a delay in them getting a contractor to remove those items, but that's been accomplished, so they are now requesting to be scheduled to be heard by the city council. The submitted street closure exhibit depicts a closure of half of a 15-foot-wide alleyway, totaling just about 334 square feet, and incorporating that into the applicant's property that's along 45th Street. Since the initial submission, the Public Utilities Department has provided additional comments that they no longer require access to the abandoned infrastructure within the right-of-way, so we will modify that condition and remove the recommendation for a public utilities easement, and you'll see that change in the documents that we provide you. In 2019, there was opposition to the street closure by the property owner to the north. They were frustrated that improvements were placed in the right-of-way, and they believe that these improvements have diminished their privacy. Three letters of support were also provided by property owners in the immediate area, and there were no speakers at the Planning Commission public hearing, so they do recommend approval with a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Could you just pull the microphone down a little, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
So items two and three include a rezoning of 67 acres along both Harpers and Dam Neck Roads to conditional I-1 light industrial district, as well as a conditional use permit for the bulk storage of delivery vehicles. The proposal includes the construction of a 221,000-square-foot distribution center that includes some warehouse and office space. Significant improvements to Harper's Road are proposed in the form of the construction of both a right and left turn lane at each of the ingress egress points, the widening of the travel lanes by 12 feet, and then also the installation of curb and gutter. There was one speaker in opposition at the Planning Commission public hearing who noted concerns related to the increase in traffic along the rights-of-way, lighting, and then also noise from the delivery trucks. Despite the opposition, the Planning Commission did vote nine to zero to recommend approval. There was an application for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at the August Planning Commission hearing, and this was heard because that application was submitted in late 2020, so they had the ability to move forward to the Planning Commission. This is a request for five short-term rentals at the oceanfront on property that is owned Oceanfront Resort District, and it's specifically within the Mayflower Apartment Building. The initial proposal was for up to 10 short-term rental units that were distributed throughout the building, however, the applicant has modified their request, and they have reduced it down to five short-term rental units, all on the top floor, which is the 16th floor. Fire suppression is addressed in the conditions, and the applicant agrees to add a sprinkler system into each short-term rental unit, and then also construct a standpipe at the 16th floor to aid with fire suppression in the event that there is a fire on that top floor. Three letters of opposition were submitted, two were specifically related to the request for 10 units, and then we got one recently for the request for just five. That was from a hotelier, from an attorney who represents three hoteliers, who believe this is really not the right location for a short-term rental. Other concerns were related to a illegal short-term rental that was in the building. Apparently, a tenant was subleasing their unit, and that was not acceptable to the property owner, so as soon as they were notified, they did cease doing that. And then there was also concerns about the actual condition of the building. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval, and according to our research, the property is not currently advertised, and they have not had any stays for more than a year, and that's when we first discovered that they had that illegal unit. So they did indeed take care of that. Item number nine is a conditional use permit for alternative residential development in order to construct one 2,700-square-foot single-family dwelling on property that's agriculturally zoned along West Gibbs Road in the Princess Anne District. This almost 12-acre parcel is a residual of a 2008 subdivision plot, and with the conditional use permit for alternative residential development, the residential density is limited to the quality of the soils. So based on the soil types on this 12-acre site, they would, at the most, achieve one dwelling unit, and that is exactly what they're asking for. An onsite disposal system, as well as a private well, does exist on the property. There is no known opposition, and the Planning Commission placed that request on their consent agenda. Item 10 is a request of the Development Authority to update the design criteria associated with a portion of the corporate landing business park. So this change only applies to property that is under current ownership by the Development Authority, and then a second property owner, which is Frog Incorporated, who expressed a desire to adopt these new guidelines as well. This park was rezoned in 1988, and the last update to the design criteria was in 1998, so we think it's time that they take a look at this. The properties, other than those held by the authority and Frog Incorporated, will continue to be reviewed under the current standards, and the new design guidelines will provide more flexibility in terms of building setbacks, where parking might be located, building materials, among other things. So the city council will be provided by the Department of Economic Development the full package prior to your consideration. And this information is currently available on their website as well, and the address is listed on the slide, and we also have the draft document on the Planning Commission's webpage as well. Let me show you. There is no known opposition to this request, and this was also on the Planning Commission's consent agenda. Item number 11 was deferred by city council last week. This is an application that we did brief you on previously, so you may be familiar. It's a request to allow a retail use, specifically a Dollar Tree, on this parcel that is currently zoned B1 neighborhood business. So in order to operate a retail use, they do need to go to the B2 community business district. The current proffers associated with the site limit the use of the property to just a pharmacy. The existing building on the site was formerly a Rite Aid pharmacy, and it has sat vacant for quite a few years. The proposal includes the reuse of the existing building, and then a new vehicular ingress egress along Round Hill Drive, and any potentially objectionable uses have been proffered out, which means they would be prohibited on this site. And while there once was quite a bit of opposition, council member Wooton, the neighborhood, the applicant and staff all worked together to resolve the initial vehicular ingress egress point controversy. So there were no speakers at Planning Commission based on all of that outreach that was done, and this was placed on their consent agenda. And then the last items on the 7th refer to the zoning ordinance amendments that were deferred relating to safety requirements for short-term rentals, and then also the reconsideration of the overlays districts, and I believe specifically the oceanfront overlay district for short-term rentals. And you have this scheduled as a discussion point immediately following this presentation, so you may want to wait to talk about it at that point. Mr. Dehan. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, Bobby.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. On the September 21st agenda, you do have six items under consideration, with them being four properties. One is in the Centerville and Beach districts, with the two remaining items in the Princess Anne District. First item is by Thomas Brown in the Centerville District on Indian River Road, is requesting a subdivision variance, and again, this is in the Centerville District. The current properties that are under consideration for the subdivision variance are zoned, oh, why am I missing a zone? Are zoned R10, which requires a minimum lot width of 80 feet in width. The applicant's property frontage is currently 75.8 feet. They are proposing to create three lots, with each lot at different points in the measurement, being able to achieve the 80 feet in lot width. The green and orange parcels being able to meet the lot width at the front yard setback, as defined by the zoning ordinance, with proposed parcel C1 being able to meet the 80-foot lot width, but at a 90-foot setback.
Ms. Johnson?
Is this in Centerville? It looks so similar to what was in Princess Anne.
No, it's different.
This is different, but this isn't...
No, I see that it's a different one, but it's Indian River Road, and so...
This is Indian River Road up near Lynnhaven Parkway, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Along Stumpy Lake.
Yes, near Stumpy Lake. It is in Centerville.
Anything pretty much from Salem Road and...
You can see my confusion, though, it's the same name.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it looks like a similar issue.
Indian River Road goes a long way.
Yes, it does, thank you.
The existing configuration, I'm having trouble, are there existing three lots?
No, ma'am, there are two lots that exist. One is the larger lot, which has 217 feet, while the other lot is a residual portion of another lot, which is 19 feet wide.
So he wants to divide, he wants to take two lots and make it three?
That is correct. He currently has 75.8 feet in width, I'm sorry. He needs 80 foot in width, and he does, he's just shy of that for each of the lots. So he would need 240 feet of width, and he's just shy of that. He does meet the measurement of the 80-foot lot width for the green parcel and the orange parcel that's noted on the screen right here, at the setback, which is where the measurement's taken, and then proposed parcel C1, he is, he does meet the 80-foot lot width requirement when measured 90 feet back. So there is some uniqueness to the property lines that the applicant will more than likely argue is his reason for the subdivision request.
Okay, anybody else?
Item number two is by Ted Tigner at 501 Carolina Avenue in the Beach District. This is a request for a change or an expansion of a non-conformity. There is an existing two-family residence that has been on the property since the 1940s and 50s, and this is in the Shadow Lawn neighborhood. Specifically, what they're requesting to do is to essentially square off the main principal dwelling in the back with an expansion for a living room, playroom, bedroom, and bathroom. There is an existing deck in that area that they will be eliminating. They are proposing no changes to the 600-square-foot accessory, or the ancillary dwelling unit, which is the second dwelling in the rear. And we did receive 10 letters of support from surrounding property owners, and there was no known opposition to the request, and the Planning Commission had this on their consent agenda. Item number three is by Wakefield Development LLC at 2328 and 2264 Salem Road in the Princess Anne District. The applicant is proposing a conditional rezoning of 40 acres along Salem Road from R15 and AG1 to conditional R10 for the creation of a new 86-lot residential subdivision. There are two existing single-family dwellings that will be kept on the property, with the additional 84 new homes proposed. They are proposing to have vehicular access ingress and egress solely from Salem Road at two points, with an additional emergency access point. The stormwater management pond is depicted in the central area of the property, and will, has been determined by staff to be able to comply with the stormwater regulations. There were three speakers at the Planning Commission hearing that were in opposition to the request, noting their current concerns with stormwater management and drainage. Again, this will be required to meet the stormwater requirements, to show that they will have no impact upstream and downstream. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend this for approval. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend this for approval. The last items are items four, five, and six, which are by Two Farms Incorporated, known as Royal Farms, at the intersection of General Booth Boulevard and Princess Anne Road in the Princess Anne District. These properties, this request is for conditional rezoning from O2 office to conditional B2 business, with a request for conditional use permits for automobile service station and a car wash facility. The property is located in the Nemo Church Historic and Cultural Overlay District, which required the property, before going to the Planning Commission, going to the Historical Review Board for a review of its design.
They just opened a 7-Eleven there, right?
There was a 7-Eleven across Princess Anne Road that was redeveloped. Yes, sir. The feature, the proposal includes over one acre of wooded area adjacent to the existing cemetery next to the Nemo Church to be preserved by the applicant, and to have an eight-foot privacy fence installed along that area as well. There were 15 letters of opposition received, with one petition of opposition. There was one speaker in support, and 11 speakers in opposition at the Planning Commission public hearing. The Planning Commission, on a five-to-four vote, recommended approval with the deletion of Condition 1, which would allow for a right-in and right-out onto General Booth Boulevard.
What was the crux of the opposition?
The opposition had concerns with its impacts to the existing church and cemetery, as well as impacts of a car wash facility and automobile fueling station and convenience store at this corner.
Okay.
Again, I will note that the Planning Commission did recommend the removal of the one condition that was proposed by staff. General Booth Boulevard is a access, identified as access-controlled on the plans, which is why staff only recommended a right turn in. The Planning Commission removed that to allow for a right-in and right-out on General Booth Boulevard.
Do we have a, any type of support documentation from Public Works for their request?
So it is, the traffic impact is included in the proposal. It does show that the...
I'd like to hear a little more enumeration. I know that intersection has historically been a difficult one, and with the road project now, it's important to hear their comments.
Yes, ma'am. And that is the end of the glimpse briefing.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, I guess now we're on to council discussion. The first one is the Amendment to the City Code, Section 241.2, Short-Term Rentals.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, at this time, the Planning Director, Bobby Tahan, is going to brief council on the short-term rental ordinance amendment items that were left off from the last time we met to discuss short-term rentals. So he's going to update you, let you know what's coming before you in the September meeting.
Okay, thanks, Bobby.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor members of council, I know we've spent a long time talking about short-term rentals, and it is coming back around for discussion from, deferral from the previous meeting. The goal of this presentation is just to walk you through, one, the current enforcement status, as well as the summary of the current regulations, to make sure everyone has a similar understanding, and a review of the reconsideration item, and the review of the general short-term rental regulations that were deferred to the September 7th meeting. So the current enforcement status, as we've left off, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong, Ms. Wilson, that there currently is potentially, hopefully, a meeting to be scheduled with the City Attorney's Office and the court to kind of go over some of our last kind of lingering issues as we try to make sure we get the enforcement right. We don't want to show up at court and not be on the same page as far as how we're doing our enforcement, so we do want to make sure that we are handling that appropriately. Letters were sent to those that previously applied to obtain a zoning permit, letting them know that they are, that they need to apply for the new zoning permit. So as council members during the budget process, a $200 zoning permit fee was adopted, as well as requiring them to show that they are in compliance with the current zoning regulations of, at the time, which would be 241.2. A full notification will be sent to all the operators of short-term rentals, whether legal or illegal, after the overlay districts are reconsidered, as well as any proposed changes to Section 241.2. We don't want to send confusing information to the public, so we did hold off on sending the mass mailing to assure that we let the public know that these are the regulations that you need to abide by and how you need to apply, which includes a feature that we did, we were able to activate last month, which was the ability to apply for your short-term rental permit, your zoning permit, online through the city's SLA portal. And then also, we are continuing our investigations as normal, with our staff member being able to do weekend inspections on alternating weeks, or as necessary. So just to review the current short-term rental regulations, short-term rentals are permitted as a matter of right in the Sandbridge Special Service District per the Code of Virginia, and they must meet the general requirements of Section 241.2, which is what will be considered at the September 7th City Council hearing. New short-term rentals are only allowed by conditional use permit in short-term rental overlay districts, but there are no short-term rental overlay districts right now, which means there are no new short-term rentals allowed to apply for a conditional use permit at this time. Grandfathered and short-term rentals with conditional use permits are permitted to operate under the regulations of their approvals. So whenever they were grandfathered or by their conditional use permit, they are allowed to continue to operate in that manner. And again, as I noted earlier, each short-term rental is required to obtain a zoning permit every year to show that they're in compliance with the regulations.
Is this the time to ask questions, or do you want to wait?
Yeah, go ahead, and then Ms. Wilson.
This issue of which existing short-term rentals are legal, all right, could you kind of give me the background on that? I mean, I think there's maybe some confusion about which ones are legal, and what they have had to do to make certain that they are touching all the bases that we are going to require for them to be able to go forward. I think there is some concern that some people who have had them for years think they're legal when maybe they aren't.
So the key is that they had to have been documented paying the transient occupant tax prior to July 1st, 2018. If they can show that they have paid that, then they would be considered a grandfathered short-term rental, or they would need to obtain a conditional use permit, or have obtained a conditional use permit over the last year. So those are the two, those are the two that would be permitted to operate legally.
All right, so they have to show that they had paid the taxes...
Correct.
Prior to...
July 1st, 2018.
2018. But are there also papers that they have to make certain are filed with your office?
Yes, ma'am, so they are required to submit, we have an application that's online right now, where they have to submit the information showing that they did pay with the Commissioner of Revenue, and that they meet all the other requirements of Section 241.2, which would be the parking requirements and the other items that are listed in the zoning ordinance.
How did we make people aware that they needed to do that?
So right now, I believe it was two, two or three weeks ago, at least for the ones that had already submitted documentation to us, which was about, near around 500 people, we had sent them a letter stating, "You need to submit the following documentation to the zoning department, or submit it online," and we gave them the link to how to submit.
All right, so there could be people, though, who have been paying their taxes all this time, who have not done that. We did not have a capability of just sending the papers to all the people who were paying the taxes?
No, ma'am, we do not have the list of all those that have been paying taxes at this time. What we will do, once we, once council decides on September 7th how to move forward with the changes to Section 241.2 and the overlay reconsideration, staff will then go in from our third-party software, tracking everybody that has operated a short-term rental, and we'll send them all a letter telling them that they need to submit their paperwork.
So they would still have the opportunity to submit the paperwork if they haven't?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I think there's been some concern that if we didn't adopt this overlay, particularly in the North End, that there would be people who had been doing this for decades who would suddenly not be able to, but we're making every attempt to get in touch with those people and make sure they have everything.
Correct, yes, ma'am. At least those that have operated, that we, that our third-party software has notified us of. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, thank you, Bobby. All this has been really complicated. I don't envy all that you've had to do, but anyway, I received this message and email from a fellow who's been doing the short-term rentals, he's been doing it for a while. And he said that with this new information that he was given, that he was supposed to resubmit a complete CUP for his property, even if he already did it. He needed to submit a site plan, survey, sworn statement, drawing plan, and receipts, and that he has to do that every year. Is that true?
He has to, so the paperwork, minus the conditional use permit if he already has one, minus that, he does have to submit that information every year. Again, as long as, once they get it together, they just have to submit it to us again so that we can issue the permit to show that they're consistent with the rules.
But they don't have to submit a complete CUP?
No, no, ma'am, no.
And that's what he seemed to think. But I can see your point, if you've already got your survey and you've got everything, you just...
Send it back in.
Same copies.
Correct. We're trying to make it as easy for staff to be able to do this, too, instead of trying to hunt down each piece. We do want to be as helpful as possible, but with as many that are operating, it makes it very difficult for staff to do that.
Yeah, he says he has to do this every year. So, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions at this point?
As part of the September, the first meeting in September, the first is the overlay reconsideration that was voted previously by council. Again, there is a summary that was submitted to you in your Friday packages explaining, kind of providing all the background information to that. Because it was considered altogether, in that reconsideration is the North End and Oceanfront Resort. However, as discussed with council at the end of that meeting, the intention of council is to only reconsider the Oceanfront Resort overlay district. So the City Attorney's Office has prepared an alternate ordinance, which is in your package, your Friday package, and then can be substituted or changed out at the hearing, so that we are sure that we're only answering that question. So the other key component to that are the amendments to Section 241.2. Again, these items were deferred on the July 13th, 2021 agenda. And again, 241.2 and the zoning ordinance are the regulations that apply overall, overarching to short-term rentals, which does include the Sandbridge, those that operate in Sandbridge. There were concerns voiced by some of the council members regarding the sponsored ordinance and how some of the requirements may be more restrictive or potentially invasive with the requirement of inspections and other things like that. So staff did want to walk through each one of these. This is a lot shorter than the other ones that we have had to do previously, but we, staff is hoping to get some council direction so that we can try to put together an ordinance if necessary. Now, that is different than what's already there. So what I have listed here are similar to the table that you did receive in your Friday package, noting on there, it states what the existing ordinance says, the City Council referred ordinance, the Planning Commission recommendation, which I believe is a more neutral recommendation, as far as addressing some of the concerns from the council members, and then the City Council direction that was provided to us in the meeting in May. So the sign posting on the home, the Planning Commission recommended that a sign be posted with the contact phone number of the operator representative, and must be visible from the street, and is no larger than four square feet. During the May public hearing or workshop, council did agree with the Planning Commission recommendation, but I do know there were some concerns dealing with this posting of signage.
Bobby, just on the visible from the street, the only issue I have with that is I don't think there's any intention to mean that you can read it from the street. The sign itself is visible.
Correct.
But does anybody have any concerns about that? It says visible, I guess that doesn't necessarily mean it's readable.
Could I, would you mind if I, what do you do for like these high-rise buildings that have many short-term rentals? I mean, it'd be kind of silly to have somebody who's got 110 units to put out 110 signs.
Right, I wouldn't say the assumption, but we would interpret that as, hopefully, since it's in a high-rise building, well, I guess it depends if it's a condo or not, that'll be the key. So that is not, technically, if there were different operators or someone that was a responsible party for each of those units, it would need a separate sign, but that does not make sense either. We would probably try to work with that group to see if there was someone...
Yeah, where are they supposed to put the signs?
Right. The key is that we want to be able to have, or at least the Planning Commission's recommendation, the thought process was to have the ability to contact someone available to the public if there was an issue ongoing. And then also on there, on that sign, we would include the city's third-party call center, where they could call if they had a complaint, if they didn't want to call that person.
So one sign would be sufficient, or is this be like the parking where you can waive them having to do it?
I would, the plan that I would, I would believe, and I would hope, and we would have to discuss this, is it would be some joint contact in these condos so that we don't have these separate signs, but if there are separate operators, we would have to figure out how to, how to address that in that proposal.
Well, some of them, I mean, I know one fellow who was doing it on his own, whereas most of the people in the building was going through the association to do it, so it could be, it could be both, and it's, and you're not going to know who signed us what.
Right.
It's, I think it's something we need to figure out before we come to vote on this again.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
Okay, anybody else at this point?
The next is the criteria to be grandfathered. Again, this has the information that I told Ms. Henley. What we, there were no changes proposed from the Planning Commission, however, there was discussion to bring back up the discontinuation of a short-term rental. So if a short-term rental has not been used for two years, that it would be, it would remove its grandfathered status. So it would line up, it would essentially align with the nonconforming rules, so if someone doesn't use a nonconforming use for two years, that use would go away. That was requested by council at the May workshop, and that is in the council direction ordinance. I guess the question is, is the council want to leave that in there for the expiration of a grandfathered status for a short-term rental?
Okay, any questions on that so far?
Okay.
Here, there have been questions about when does the two years start to run. I assume, I sent one of those to you, Bobby. I assume, have you answered that gentleman?
He sent a clarifying question, so we wanted to, since that, I had not had time to respond to him, but we will respond to him.
All right, thanks.
But again, it would be, if they do, in all honesty, if they do show that they operated a short-term rental once in a two-year period, they show that they've operated and they continue to keep it, so...
It's not too tough.
Yeah. So, next is the identification of a responsible party. The current ordinance requires someone to be able to respond within 30 minutes, but that can be by phone. The council referral required to be physically there or respond within 30 minutes. The Planning Commission stated that someone needs to be able to respond within 30 minutes, which can be by phone, but physically respond to the site within an hour. And then at the May hearing, the council agreed with that as the, with the Planning The next item is the time limitations for conditional use permits, which was a very, I wouldn't say controversial, but one that was a hot topic for many people that have conditional use permits or approvals already. As it was referred to the Planning Commission, well, I'll just go to the Planning Commission recommendation, the Planning Commission recommends that a conditional use permit that is not in an overlay district be allowed, or any conditional use permit really, to be allowed to be administratively reviewed by staff and granted an extension every five years. And of course, if there's a violation, a significant violation to be detrimental to a neighborhood, that we would bring those back to the City Council for revocation, which would be similar to the regular revocation process if we ran across one of those that were legally operating.
Bobby, do you have any, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, speaking on the turn?
Yeah, go right ahead, thanks. Do you have any experience, or done any, anybody in the legal department you know, okay, done any research on that standard? Is that, any indication that's an enforceable standard? That is detrimental to the neighborhood?
That's probably more, that's probably more my terminology than what's in the ordinance. The ordinance says...
What's in the ordinance, exactly? I don't remember. Yeah, because that didn't strike me as familiar language, right?
It noted in the ordinance that any violation, a short-term rental could be brought, could be brought back to City Council for any violation of a local, state, or federal law.
Or red leachings.
What we would do, if it was, if it was trash and debris, we wouldn't be sending them back to council for a revocation, but if there was a shooting or some... But if there was a shooting or some other act of violence on a property, we would bring it forward and have them explain themselves to council. The key is, is that there is some need for...
I think the brain could hardly imagine all the things people could do at a short-term rental if they really wanted to do.
This is true. But if there was a repeat offense...
99.9% of them won't, but I'm just trying to have a standard that's legally enforceable.
If there was a property that had multiple offenses for trash and debris, that could be one that we would bring back because they cannot, they cannot show that they operate well with the neighbors. If it was a one-time issue that we could take care of, then that's one thing. But if it's every week that there's trash and debris, that could be one that we would bring back because of the detriment to the neighborhood and their lack of...
Okay, well, I'll just ask Ms. Wilson to take a look at that and what the, what the standard for review is and make sure it's something that actually has some meaning.
Yes, sir.
That we can enforce.
Anyone else at this point? Rocky, I am so sorry you didn't have the opportunity to go through the baptism of fire with short-term rentals. You don't know what you missed, Rocky.
I'm sure he watched it all.
These next two items are the life safety requirements that were proposed by council member Henley. One was that the owner representative provide us a signed affidavit annually saying that there's a fire extinguisher and the ordinance showing how they're supposed to operate, are posted where they're supposed to be posted. The planning commission did not change that recommendation. The council direction during the May workshop was to, was no change but to require a site inspection prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. And then also there was the ability to allow for onsite inspections conducted by either a short-term rental management company that the city has trained, or not trained, but has gone through a city training on what we look for, or by a certified home inspector. So this was one that did bring up a concern by some council members that would, that should we just allow or require an affidavit to be signed stating that it's in compliance or to require the onsite inspection?
At least the first time should have an onsite. I mean, maybe, maybe every three years it should be onsite or something because there might be other things that someone picks up on that is definitely a safety violation that should be noted. It just worries me that we don't have any type of inspection for health or safety with these properties that are just single-family residences that are converted to transient occupancy. And I think really these occupants or these people who are coming expect that somebody is going to be in oversight to make sure they're safe. I'm not, you know, I don't have any specific wording, but it just seems to me that we, we have a great responsibility when we're allowing these to be used for transient occupancy to make sure they have safe, they have safety issue, things that are, that are as basic as a fire extinguisher. And it still bothers me that we don't, don't note exits. I mean, when you're in a strange place, but I know we don't want to be overburdened some, but I think we have to be effective.
All right. Next one is the deck safety requirement. The planning commission recommended that a structural report be submitted every five years as performed by a registered design professional, and then also noting that the occupant load must be placed or on a placard displayed on the property. The council direction at the workshop agreed with the planning commission but changed the report to every three years instead of every five years.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Buluchi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a question about the registered design professional. Could you define that more clearly for me?
I'm sorry. A registered design professional is someone certified by the state that is licensed to essentially perform the, the engineering or the work to design it. So in this instance, it would be someone with a structural engineering background. That's an engineer or an architect.
Thank you. And would that be defined somewhere else within the regulation so that it would be understood? Just to me, that seems like a broad term, or would that, would that be sort of baked into the understanding, or?
It's baked into the understanding. That's a, that's a terminology that's used by DEPOR, the Department of Professional Occupation Regulation. So we're trying to be consistent so that we don't leave out a group that could certify it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else at this point?
Last one that did also bring some concern from council members is the ledger reporting. It was not in the referred ordinance. It was considered by planning commission but not in their recommendation. But the council direction in the May workshop was to require a ledger to be submitted to planning with the zoning permanent application, and it includes the number of rentals per year, when they occurred, and the number of occupants per stay. It is not supposed to have any identifying information, but it is supposed to be just the keeping of the books to show when they held their rentals and to make sure it aligns with what information we have. There was concern over this one specifically, just because of what, since it is a zoning application, it goes with the property and the zoning permit, and it does get held with the, with the record.
Any comment on this? Mr. Tower?
I've gotten some pushback on this one from applicants who think it's excessive. And I'm trying to remember our discussion about it as to what the, what the thought was in requiring this. And when it's the number of rentals per year, it might have been when we were restricting the number of rentals per year. Now, we do still restrict, restrict it to the number per week, which so that's, this, I suppose, our pushback the other direction is this is the way we, that the owner, we certifies that he's complying with our once-a-week rental.
For those that are in an overlay, once, once an overlay is created.
Right, assuming, assuming you're in an overlay.
Right, and the two per week for, for Sandbridge.
And the other, and, but there are also ones that are not, not in overlay that have been granted conditional use permits.
Yes, sir.
The number of rentals per year, when they occurred, and the number of occupants, I guess that's the occupants so we can test, is testing the limits on the number of occupants that we have baked into the regulations. So these are self-reporting of regulations that we already, already have in place, which has been my answer is that, you know, it shouldn't be a problem if you're, one, keeping the records that you probably would keep anyway, and number two, you're required by law to do this.
Okay, anybody else?
All right. Just for the public watching at home as well as for the council members, we did just do a revamp of our short-term rental website. So vbgov.com/str has a lot of information available to you, including how to file a complaint with our third-party call center, which is available 24 hours a day, and will go directly into our system. We actually, when we've had, had people contact the third-party complaint call center, we actually get a recording of the call, so we get to actually hear the interaction, make sure that, one, our third party is, is getting the information appropriately, and then, two, we can actually hear if there's any additional information that may have been missed in the reporting. So that is a very good tool that we, that the city council has allowed staff to get so that we can help to monitor these short-term rentals and any complaints that we have. Additionally, we have, of course, staff that man the short-term rental at vbgov.com email address as well as the direct line just dealing with short-term rentals at 385-8862. And with that, I'll take any further questions.
Ms. Henley?
So these replace 311?
So our goal is to, instead of contacting 311, who's already, they're already taxed with other complaints at the city, is to contact with a short-term rental, a complaint, this number here so that, one, we'll also get the recording, and, two, it'll go directly into our system.
How do we expect to provide these complicated numbers to people? Because they're not your basic, easy-to-remember numbers.
It is on the website. We do need to do that. Part of what we want to do is on the sign that's provided to, if, if council continues to move forward with the sign requirement, sign of the contact person, and then also sign of any, the number with any complaints. So if you have any complaints, please contact this number.
So we would have the third-party call center to receive complaints, and we would also have the city contacts. What are they, the inspectors, or?
Yes, ma'am. The short-term rental at vbgov.com goes directly to the, the short-term rental inspection team. As well as this phone number here, the 8862 number goes directly to the short-term rental inspection team.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Bobby, thanks for the update.
Sir, thank you.
These things ain't easy. I think, Mr. Wood, when your grandchildren are out of college, we're still going to be talking about STR.
It's just a guess.
I'm not going to miss this.
All righty. Okay, moving on. Okay, I guess we're going to be talking about the bond referendum regarding flood protection. Mrs. Henley, would you like to start off?
Mr. Mayor, let me go.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. DeHany.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, the request of council, council asked us to come back and participate in a discussion with council about the bond referendum, in particular about the communication and the messaging. We're going to start with a video that we're just a great ready to finalize. It'll be about seven to eight minutes. From there, we want to talk out the communication support documents and also go over the schedule for the outreach events. And lastly, before we get started, I think you all have seen the email from council member Moss. He's asked that I forward the draft resolution to you all, which you all have a copy of. He wants this to be part of the discussion that council has today, should council so desire. He thinks this will be a good document that the citizens can see is how the city's going to manage and conduct should the referendum be passed. But at this time, I think we want to roll out the video for council's review.
Thank you, Mr. DeHany.
Virginia's largest city by population is battling a chronic water crisis. Not too little water, like some places, but too much. Virginia Beach faces the greatest risk for major flooding of any metro area on the East Coast because of more frequent and more destructive storms, along with rising sea levels. Existing stormwater infrastructure just can't keep up with it all. The flooding affects everyone citywide, turning Virginia Beach roads into streams, creating dangerous conditions for drivers, sometimes cutting off whole neighborhoods. Even on sunny days, high winds are known to trigger rising water. Small rainstorms often create minor flooding, but bigger storms bring so much water that they damage our homes, cars, and businesses. This recurrent flooding also threatens the health of the Virginia Beach economy. More than 15,000 civilian employees work at military bases here. Millions of tourists flock to our beaches and attract every year. And major employers like GEICO, Centerra, and Steel gravitate here, enjoying the low cost of doing business in Virginia Beach. But they all have one thing in common, a need for passable roads and a community safe from floods. FEMA analysis projects that up to one in every 10 buildings in Virginia Beach is currently at risk of damage if a large storm hit today. That number climbs to one in four when combined with a sea level rise of one and a half feet. And the damage risk jumps to two out of every three homes and other buildings if the sea level rises three feet. Virginia Beach is tackling flooding head-on. The city is already investing more money in stormwater projects than it invests in any other area. City engineers say recently completed projects show significant improvements. To keep ahead of this threat, the city of Virginia Beach wants to accelerate and expand work to address additional flood challenges. A city council authorized referendum on flood protection for voters to consider is on the November ballot. It's an aggressive, multi-generational flood protection program to speed up existing flood and stormwater controls while adding new projects as well. City leaders believe the proposed flood protection program will have a ripple effect that safeguards homes, protects businesses, and responsibly addresses stormwater issues for generations to come. Voters will decide on November 2 whether the city can issue what's called general obligation bonds for up to $567.5 million. This bond referendum would pay for 21 major projects and other improvements in six major areas. They would be built over the next 10 years on a timetable far shorter than current schedules, all to provide Virginia Beach with fiscally sustainable, long-term flood protection. The flood protection referendum will allow for existing resources to remain in place and be redirected to focus on stormwater maintenance efforts. The city will also report back to Virginia Beach residents, tracking progress, schedules, and budgets. This comprehensive flood protection program is on the ballot in Virginia Beach this November 2. Depending on the final terms of the bond issue, property taxes in Virginia Beach will rise between 4.3 and 6.4 cents. This translates into about $10 to $14 more a month for property owners, or about $115 to $171 more in property tax each year. Without these improvements, flooding will be increasingly harder to control, and the fixes will take longer, creating a less desirable ripple effect. The estimated average losses due to stormwater flood hazards in Virginia Beach today are already about $437 million a year, according to a recent study. If the city does nothing with a one and a half-foot sea level rise, those losses could reach $616 million and grow to $1.66 billion in losses with a sea level rise of three feet in Virginia Beach. However, the flood protection program bond referendum aims to minimize the risk of flooding, reduce damage, and better protect the entire Virginia Beach community. Here are projects as listed in Phase 1 of the flood protection program referendum. First, in the Lincoln Bay Drainage Basin, improvements along First Colonial Road and Oceana Boulevard include building a new stormwater management facility to divert stormwater and provide more runoff storage. Improvements in the Sea-Tac neighborhood include installing or replacing large drainage pipes to collect more runoff. And in the Central Beach District, projects include improvements to the 24th Street culvert, construction of major stormwater collection systems, pump stations, and an ocean outfall system to combat flooding. Next, along Eastern Shore Drive, residents will notice improvements in stormwater collection and a brand-new pump station. And at Chubb Lake and Lake Bradford, look for drain and culvert improvements, tide-controlled devices, and retention, detention ponds, along with new pump stations. In the Southern Watershed, the plan calls for new floodgates and levees at the West Net Creek Bridge, a part of the city's sea-level-wise adaptation strategy. Also in the works, significant improvements to stormwater green infrastructure, including a marsh restoration project and back. The flood protection plan also calls for raising Punggol Ferry Road and improvements to the Sandbridge New Bridge Intersection. At Windsor Woods and Sasan Plaza and the lakes, plans call for turning the Bow Creek Golf Course into a park with stormwater storage. A new tide gate, pump station, and tide barriers will be built along London Bridge Creek. A new flood control gate will be constructed along Holland Road at the lakes. Along with... new earth and concrete flood barriers in the lakes and Windsor Woods. The city also plans a new stormwater pump station near Lake Windsor and South Boulevard, and flood control improvements at Thalia Creek and Lake Trashmore. To help you navigate the decision, learn more about the November bond referendum and the flood protection program. Visit www.vbgov.com/rippleeffect.
That was pretty gooood.
But wait, there's more.
Hi, Julie.
How are you, Mayor?
Good.
Nice, Mayor.
Julie, if I could say, you know, we just got the announcement that you're looking to retire. And let me just say, you know, once again, with Jim and everything, I'll tell you what, you have been so much a part of the DNA of this city. You know, once again, you've been a friend, you've been a colleague, and you have really done so much for the image of this city in a most professional way. You are to be applauded.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Kind of you to say. Thank you.
Thank you. But I'll tell you what, that's not a bad plug. Good stuff. No, thank you.
Mr. Manager, did you have more you wanted to? So what you have in front of you is a compilation of the information that we have to date, a lot of the material that will be contributing to our educational campaign. The notebooks for you, I'm going to start with the calendar on top, which gives you just September, but it gives you a sense of a level of activity and some of the meetings that we have scheduled. The pink items are intact groups that we'll be providing presentations to, and the more maroon color are some of the public briefings. And we are doing a mix of both virtual and in-person. And of course, as we all know, the in-person meetings may be subject to some alterations depending on COVID. So we are just going to have to pivot, as we have been for the last year and a half, on any of the items that we have. But we want to give you a sense of not only what's already planned, but where you might see some opportunity. So if you have a group that you want us to reach out to, or you have a group that you would like to host, to let us know, we can work those out. One of the key things that we've discovered is the need to do as many things as possible because we aren't reaching any one group or our whole group on any one platform. So we are trying to do 1,000 things, quite frankly, in order to make sure that everybody has the information that they need and can receive it, ask us questions, interact, and engage. So that's the top piece. The second one is the news release that we would plan to send out, following your feedback and your comments and making sure that we didn't need to change anything. But that's the draft that's there. We started last week. The manager sent you an update report on our communication activity over the preceding weeks, and we'll be doing that now every week for you through November 2nd. And it will include where we are, some of the data that we have, as well as what's on deck. Our whole campaign is designed to be rolling out over the next two months and not have everything ready to go on September 1st, and then we have nothing else. So it is an iterative process. We have duplication in there, but we'll also be introducing some new pieces. For example, we'll have some infographics. We have plans for some individual videos. Not everybody's going to sit through the riveting eight minutes of this video. We'll cut that into smaller sections as well, be able to release that. We have some VB411 pieces planned to help people understand all the different ways that they can access the information. So that's that. That next piece that you see is a brochure. You have copies of the brochure in your folder, and we have more of those. So as you go out and you want to see people, or you have people who would like the information, those are for you to give out. We'll have additional ones at council meetings and the community meetings. So feel free to reach out to us. We're happy to reprint. So if you get those out more. We also realized that there will be places where you may be doing, or we may be doing, a presentation that doesn't have the ability to easily play a video. So we have translated that into a PowerPoint presentation. That's what follows here, both the slides and the notes for you. We've got the video script in here. And then finally, we did include the FAQs that Mr. Moss had submitted, that we provided back to you in your packet on Friday. Our goal is to really create a robust notebook for you reference for you. So when you get questions, you'll be able to have that. This is something that we can add to and amend as things change, as we learn more, and as you need more information. In a nutshell, then, that's where we are with the campaign items to date. If you have questions or comments or things that you think we're missing that we can include...
Any questions or comments? Mr. Jones.
Thank you, sir. With early voting, what are you planning to do to get to the people who are going to be doing early voting?
All of these things that we just described. So we have a pretty robust plan for print, for digital, for the community meetings. We've done some outreach to the groups that appear to be more likely to do early voting than not starting in that mid-September. And as I mentioned, our idea is to keep rolling out additional information and making sure that it's fresh and that they won't be seeing the same thing time after time over the next several weeks.
When you say keep rolling out, what are the methods that you plan on keep rolling it out? I guess I'm, what I'm concerned about is you're going to have all these people who, because of early voting, are going to go out and vote. And if they don't have sufficient information in front of them, they're probably going to vote no.
Carrie?
And so, it seems to me like prior to the beginning of early voting, we need to get something to all of the registered voters in the city of Virginia Beach. And Dana's coming up behind you there waving his arm, so I...
It reminds me of Catholic school.
Oh, me too. So one additional item is, by statute, you're allowed to provide an explanation of the question, and that will be provided to the polling locations. So just like with the state referendum, they would do an explanation of a constitutional change. We have the ability to do an explanation of what is on the referendum question. And so my office is prepared to draft for it. We'll share it with y'all. That'll be something that the voters will actually have at the location to interact with. We're limited to 500 words, but that is what we have.
Well, I, let me put it this way. I think you need to look at this like it's a political campaign. And, and, and to, in order, if I may, you need to look at this like it's a political campaign. And, you know, one of the, one of the effective ways of getting to people is to get something in their house before they go out to vote. And it just seems to me like it's worth spending the money for some direct, for direct mail to these voters before they actually go to the polls, or before they do their early voting, whichever way they do it. And, and I know it costs money, but, and, as a, as a, in, as a expense, it's, it's not going to be that much compared to what we get out of it. And, and I just think you need seriously to think about a direct mail program prior, just prior to early voting. Okay?
Okay, before I get to Mr. Wood, Mr. Ingram, is there a fine line between information and advocacy? We have a problem with advocacy, don't we?
City funds can't be spent to urge voters to vote for or against the referendum. City funds can be spent to educate the public on what, the projects that would be funded by this, the cost, the timeline, all these other aspects. But you present the facts and you let the voters reach their own conclusions.
Okay, yeah, that was a concern I had. Mr. Wood?
Thanks. And I agree with what Louis is saying. I think, I think that you need to reach out, reach out to the voters. And I follow a lot of the stuff on social media. People don't understand the process. And, and a lot of the negative comments, frankly, are, I almost think that people think that if the referendum fails, that somehow that, you know, the 11 people up here are going to pay for it out of their pockets. Because, because, and it's funny, but I mean, it seems that that's what people say. You know, I mean, when you're talking half a billion dollars in additional work, which, which that video does an excellent job of describing it, this collateral material does an excellent job of describing it. The trouble is getting that information to people and explaining to them that no matter what happens, this still has to be done. And, and I think, I mean, it's good news, bad news. We haven't had another Matthew since Matthew, which, which I think is, is the thing, I don't know. I mean, with all that rain we had this weekend, I didn't hear of a whole lot of flooding. I heard of a little bit of localized flooding. I know a lot of times when I go out my back door and there's no water in the river behind my house, Amanda's house is flooded because it's blowing that way. But, but again, that's, you know, all that stuff doesn't do. So I really think, and when you go back, and I understand what Dana's saying, 500 words to explain the referendum. But I mean, look, we've all been in the polls, and we've seen those state referenda that are, you know, 15 paragraphs long, written by attorneys, no offense to you guys, and, and the explanations are almost as bad as the referendum's questions. And, and I understand why they do that. So, you know, if there could be, you know, an explanation that looks like something like this, that, that people would actually read, even if it's only 500 words, I think that that's important. But, but ultimately, this has got to go out. Now, now my question to, to Dana O'Rourke on this is, understand that the city funds can't be used for advocacy. If, if a council member, or maybe a former council member, wants to, wants to use this information to, to reach out to others, can the city produce advocacy items if it doesn't cost anything? So, in other words, if it's, if, if you, if you change, you know, something that says the information and on here, I mean, and I know that that's a fine line, but I mean, I think it's, it's important for the members of council to be able to advocate this, for this, if they support it, because it's critically important. And, and as much as, as I've seen all this stuff, I miss the fact that there was going to be a lot of work in Sea-Tac. And I remember that guy that came, I don't know, a few months ago, maybe a year or so ago, talking about flooding in his backyard. And that's, and that's great. I mean, this is the kind of stuff we're supposed to be doing, is fixing people's problems. So, you know, and I've been looking at this stuff for months and months, and I miss that. So how you expect somebody going into the polls who's, you know, going there to vote for the governor or whatever, and they go, oh, yeah, by the way, what's this thing? I mean, I think the instinct is going to be to vote no. So I don't know how much we can go, but I think, I think if, to the extent that it's possible, that, that stuff can be produced, that council members who wish to advocate can. I don't know how that works, but...
So the statutory limitation says, "Materials or advertisements shall not advocate the passage or defeat of the referendum question." So if the city's producing materials advertising, we're held to that neutrality standard. And, you know, as, I think we've talked about before, individual council members in their individual capacity are completely free. It's more of the staff or collective activity that is the, the stuff that we're, we're most worried about in the sort of not-so-well-defined line of what advocacy is and isn't in this topic.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, and then Ms. Henley.
Julie, I love the video. And people are so oriented to that type of thing.
Watching, watching rather than reading, yeah.
So, but the attention span is usually a minute. Is there a way to break that into, like, minute segments and then push them out on Facebook? Can we pay for Facebook?
Yeah, and I have to apologize to you because I, I think between Valerie and I, we've been in front of you like four times. So I apologize. I kind of glossed over all of the different pieces that we had planned. It is in that update report that we sent you on Friday, and we've done that. I think I did mention that we were going to be slicing and dicing this one differently, and that we had some other ones planned. Because you're absolutely right. We have to put it into more...
And also...
Digestible chunks.
People, and I do it myself, there'll be a video coming on, and I don't click it on, but I'll read the words. And I'll read the whole, and I may watch the whole thing just reading the words, but not actually click on. So I think it's really important to put in words what the video is saying.
Yep, and you have the script here. They're scripted both on Facebook and on YouTube as well, with closed captioning. Actually, 85% of people do not turn sound on when they watch video on social. 85%. That's...
Do like I do, and just, okay, I'll watch it.
That's exactly right.
And I get hooked, and I'll keep watching it.
So it's got to be pretty compelling if you're going to turn your, your volume on.
The ones like the little place cards, you know?
Right, right. So that, and the Twitter, and all of those kind of things.
Yes, ma'am.
And the police are doing obviously a great job with that. Yeah, get the policemen, show the policeman out, standing in the water. But anyway, that, I think getting that video is really critical because a lot of times, people aren't going to read all of this.
So this video is the centerpiece for the presentations, for the meetings. So we will have that as an opportunity. In eight minutes, we can cover all of that, that would take, frankly, somebody standing in front of you much longer to do. So it's a very kind of time-effective way to allow for the meetings, whether they're virtual or in-person, so that we have that as a jumping-off point. We have collateral that people will be able to take with them. And then it's Q and A. So we get to make it a very personal experience for the people who want to engage with us. We'll answer, you know, as many other questions, obviously, as we can, and we'll go back. But we did have a variety of things. I know that there was some disagreement about whether or not direct mail would work, but if that's something that you want us to go ahead with, that is certainly something that we can, we can do.
Well, I mean, I agree with Louis. You've got to do multiple things to reach people, especially today. Not everybody reads the paper, nobody, you know, so you've got to have a broad slash of things. And do you think the television stations will give us any public service announcements time?
It's a good question. Don't, we can certainly, we can certainly pursue that.
Reach out and get some...
Yeah, we have tried to pursue some of the storytelling. They're just not, they're not at that point yet where, where their attention was turning to this.
Yeah, but we might can get some, some free public service announcements. Of course, we have our own VBTV and, and all of that. But I, I'm so impressed with the video. Fabulous job. But I think that could really be a centerpiece for all of this. And if we do do a mailing, you know, make sure you have something where they can type in, where they can watch that video. It's, it's really incredible.
We can add a QR code so that somebody, those seem to be making a resurgence as well, so we could bring it up that way, too.
But you and your shop do an incredible, incredible job.
That's kind of you to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Henley?
Well, I'm looking back over things that we had, like when we had the '87 referendum and the '89 referendum, the fact sheets and so forth that we passed out. But you know, folks, the '86 highway referendum was $40 million, and the '87 recreational center was $32 million, and da-da-da. We've not had anything anywhere close to the size of this referendum. I think we are, we're sadly mistaken if we think this is going to be swallowed too easily. And I'm concerned that, that we haven't made the decisions that people are going to want to have answers to. Like, how much is it going to cost me in a tax increase? I couldn't answer that question today. I know there's something in that video that says it'll be between this and this, but this council has not taken action to say how we're going to plan to finance it. And, and the people are going to want to know that. They're not going to say, oh, well, we'll decide that. We haven't taken action to determine how we're going to manage these projects. I mean, I look at these little ditch projects, these, these lead ditch projects we're trying to do down county, and they don't get done. Somebody will work a couple of weeks, and then they're pulled off to go to another project for how, who knows how long before they come back. We've got to be able to answer to people, how are we going to be able to manage a half a billion dollars' worth of projects? I mean, and who's going to get the iron at the door? Who's going to be overseeing it? Are we going to do what we did with the, with the highway referendum back in the 80s and hiring over consulting engineering firm to oversee it? consulting engineering firm to oversee it? We haven't decided these things. We had citizen oversight committees that we established, and we assured the people, we would have these citizen oversight committees throughout the time that we were expending the money. And then, we continually made reports to the public to say, this is where we are with this project, and this is how much money has been spent, and so forth. Because, as John Moss said in one of his emails this weekend, this is going to be as much about the trust the council has in our ability to perform, as it is in the need for these projects. And until we can answer these questions, we shouldn't be out there. Because these are basic questions that people are going to want to know. And by the way, it's September, what, 17th, that early voting starts? That's not very far away from now. And I, I think John Moss, we maybe we need to look at what he's said. I think he has been thinking about these things, too. And I think we've got some work to do. Because I think if we think we're going to just put this out, and people are going to think that we're going to be able to do it, we, we're, we're being overly confident.
Yeah, Mrs. Henley, I, I do agree with you, but I think this could be a two-phase approach. I think one of the things about us, you know, at least not meeting next week to talk about it this week, the first thing we have to do is come up with the why. Okay? Why do we need this to done? And to visually show that in many ways, because it ties, it really ties into a number of things. First of all, the quality of life for our residents. But the other thing, it also has to do with economic development. It has to do with keeping our Navy going. You know, there's a lot of whys. And I think if you visually see, you know, all of the sterling examples out there, that sets up the why. And then, we can go into the how. I think if you give the why and the how at the same time, that could be information overload. So, maybe if we do it segmentally, I think that might be the way to do it. But at least, you know, we're meeting today. We have something that is really concrete, that we could at least move forward with. Okay, anybody else at this point?
We have some things here from John. I hope we'll look at them at least.
Good. I think the next thing to do, let me throw it out to the council about Mr. Moss's, you know, concept of putting out a council resolution on this. Okay, we have discussion on that?
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea, too.
I think we better look at what it says.
Well, the thing is, you know, he, he left it open to a discussion. If I could recommend at this point, if we just take a look at the bare bones of this, and ask the, our esteemed city attorneys to, you know, fill in the, you know, the red blanks there. Dana, you have been on call today. This is wonderful.
Yes, sir, thank you. There was an updated draft at your, your chairs.
Yep.
So, not the version that was attached to the, the manager's memo, but the, the one that's, that one, that reflects the, the most recent text, if you want to...
Okay, you know, would you be able to, you know, put out a draft to us this week?
Yes.
That the council could at least peruse, and, you know, we can, you know, you know, discuss it among ourselves, you know?
We'll get the red spots and the highlighted...
Get the red spots taken out, and then we can know what we're dealing with. But does anybody, everybody agree that this might be a good concept to show some unity that is, yes, Mr. Duhany?
Mr. Mayor, there's some things on the memo that staff would like to get some time to digest, and some kind of response to...
Okay.
Councilmember Moss and to, and to the body as well, just to kind of get a better understanding. So, council can understand the nuances and the externalities associated with some of those comments. And as Mr. Moss submitted it, he brought it as a discussion item for council discovery, and he understands that this is his input, and he was hoping that council would have a discussion, and cohesively get together and document the whole council wants to adopt.
Right. And I think, you know, if, if, once again, if you can take into, you know, the considerations, yours and the staff's concerns, about what is executable, what's, what we can do, and what we're trying to accomplish. And once again, I think we have to lay out a case, but without the advocacy. But once again, I think we have to establish that this is a high priority of a council, that we need something. It really comes down to that old Fram Oil commercial, pay me now, or pay me a lot later. You know, and I think if we get that out. But I think if we come, come forward as a unified thing, so if we can come out with a document, we can make it a work and document, you know, and, you know, we can go forward with it. But I think the idea is to go forward with the concept, okay?
We certainly aren't going to be ready to vote on anything September 7th, which is our next voting, early voting time.
Yeah, but the thing is, even if we have the discussion on it, and, you know, we've been, Mrs. Henley, we have been known to have, you know, special things before, if we have a sense of immediacy with it. Okay, Mr. Rouse?
I can, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to finish the sentence.
Mr. Ingram and Dana, the mayor and vice mayor brought up a good point of the advocacy, the line. Where's that line? I'm still not clear where that line is. If somehow in our packet, or going forward, if we could place that line, so I know where it is. I think obviously, this is something we all support. But, you know, I don't want to violate any laws or statutes because of advocating, or appearing to be on one side to lead the public in one way or another. So, I'd just like to fully understand, where's that line of advocacy and, and information is? I think it would better, best serve council going forward.
I believe to the extent that you're receiving materials that are provided by Julie, those materials are consistent with the restrictions we've spoken about. So, you can go out to the community and distribute the materials given to you by the city without any concern. And then, you can say whatever you want to say. If, if, if you in your personal capacity want to recommend that voters vote one way or the other, you may say that. But the materials that the city produces, that we pay tax dollars for, will all be neutral.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Henley, I think, I think I might have cut you off. I apologize.
Yes, you did. I was just asking, when do we plan to vote on this? Or, or what is our plan for discussion and then vote?
That's what I thought, that we at least get the draft out, and get, you know, council's input on it, and get it, we can vote on it as soon as humanly possible.
And, and our next voting session is September 7th.
That is correct.
And then, the next one after that would be two weeks after that, which is after voting has started. So, what...
But, once again, as I indicated, there's a possibility that we could have a special session, session the week of the 7th, if it's necessary. You know, we, I think the thing is to give it a high priority. But I think the first step is to get the, to get it out, get the drafts out to the council members, get the input, and hopefully, if things, you know, there's a strong possibility, if we all react quickly, that we might be able to come out with a product for a vote on the 7th. And certainly, even on the vote on the 7th, we would have a discussion, a discussion and the ability to make amendments, or, you know, the, you know, and finalize it. But, you know, I think if we have a goal for a vote on the 7th, that would be the optimal.
And so, what's going to be the process for our doing this? Who's going to be in charge?
You know, the, the legal folks will at least come out with a draft, and we will hopefully get that to, Dana, what's a reasonable time of getting at least a draft out?
Dana, Dana, so, we have a meeting scheduled. So, the Public Works, Budget, and Ron Williams and I have a meeting scheduled, Mr. Moss, on Friday morning, to kind of go over some of our initial reactions to his draft document. And then, from there, we would like to send a memo updating the council of any kind of proposed changes, you know, and then council could then respond back to that.
Okay, so we'll have something by, hopefully by Friday?
Probably, probably the following week, you know. So, we meet on Friday to talk out some of our concerns. And then, we'll probably have it sometime during the following week. We probably would do it before the Friday package.
Okay, you know, that, that'd be good.
Well, if I might ask, there, there are some questions here that he included at the end, that I think this council has to make some decision about. And that is whether or not we want to, to have a, just one consortium of contractors, or whether we want to, how we're going to manage this. That, we just, I think that's an awful lot of logistics that we don't really know. It's not just a matter of wording a, a resolution. It's making some fundamental decisions about how we're going to manage this whole project. I mean, the, the execution of these projects, it's not just voting. That's just, that's just the beginning. How are we going to fulfill this promise that we're making to our public? That if they give us the, the authority to sell these bonds and this amount of money, how are we going to achieve this work? That's what we have not come to an understanding for ourselves. I worry about the very fact that we are behind on every project we've got going on out there. And how are we going to have the trust of the public if we don't have this plan? And that's what you all are going to have to come up with, is you're going to have to tell us how we're going to do these massive projects that we're going out and telling the public that we're going to do, when we can't even dig a ditch.
But, Mrs. Henley, I agree with your frustration, but I think, once again, I think we're at the point now where we're saying, okay, the why, you know, getting back to that, the how is going to be coming. You know, how should I put it? Necessity is indeed the mother of invention. And the point is, though, if we're establishing this as a high priority, and then, you know, once again, I have 100% confidence in Mr. Duhany and, you know, the legal staff to come up with, you know, a roadmap that'll get, get us there.
We're just going out and saying, trust me.
Well, I tell you what, that, you know, that's true with any bond referendum that comes up.
That's what I'm going to say. We said, did a whole lot more than that before we went out with all these others that we've done in the past. And I've got a forum this Thursday. And so, what am I going to tell these people? The same thing I told them a month ago. Oh, we're working on it.
We will get there, Ms. Henley. Okay. Okay, anybody else at this point? Oh, yes. Okay, Mr. Rouse, and then Ms.?
Ms. Wilson out, because I, I have something different. I, I should have brought up earlier, with short-term rentals. But I'll...
Oh, I was asking, is this the end of the flooding discussion?
Yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, we're in, yeah.
I had two things I wanted to mention. One is with, with the rise and the, with the virus, and, and it's happening. It's going like this now. It's come really close to home with a lot of people that I know that are, are getting the virus. And I talked to Mr. Duhany last week, and thought maybe we should at least start social distancing again at the DIASC. And I know you all heard about it. You said, well, let's have the council decide.
Hey.
So, I think that's a fairly easy thing to do.
Yeah.
Because we, we sit here for hours. We sit here for hours, we're right next to each other. We're very close.
Okay. Okay, what's people's thoughts on that?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Duhany, we did an outstanding job in the initial inoculation process. We had all the people at the convention center, and they were organized, and it really went well. And congratulations on that. I guess my question is, are we going to do something like that for the booster shots?
We're working, we're trying to figure that out right now with the state. So, we've had a couple of phone calls and conversations with the state to figure out what role it is that the city would have in that. The general indication now is that they're, they don't intend to do a mass vaccination effort for the booster shots. And the reason why is that they feel that there's enough distribution of the vaccine in Walgreens and CVSs and other pharmacies and other different distribution points, that they don't, that they don't need to authorize that kind of model four delivery of the booster shot. That's their initial thought process. Obviously, they may change, but right now, they don't necessarily think we need to go to some kind of mass vaccination response for the booster.
And if I can, you know, chime in, you know, because being the healthcare guy here for a while, that has gone through years of infection, is training, back then, the pharmacies and doctors' offices didn't have the capacity to do the shots. But now, with Walgreens and everybody having access to, you know, our response might be limited. You know, maybe just assisting elderly to get there. But, 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 you know, there will be, you know, a much more fluid and easier accessible ways to get the booster, if that's indeed necessary. Okay, but getting back to, you know, let's have a conversation on the social distancing request.
We've done it before, so we've already got a template of how we did it before. It seems like an easy thing to do, to keep us a little bit safer.
Yeah, I understand. But, you know, let me just say this. A lot of the things that came out last year kind of proved that it really didn't work. Now, it's basically, and I can tell you, masks really don't give much protection. And the other thing is the social distancing. They said that three feet would have been adequate. You know, but if council feels that it would be benefit, and we do have a number of council people that fall into the vulnerable role. Would, let me put it this way. Would anybody object to us going back to the, you know, the format of this, I'm saying? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I don't object. But I do think there is, and I spoke with Councilmember Wilson about this before, I don't know, a few days ago. And I respect her point of view and her concerns, that she elevated here greatly. And I don't have any objections to social distancing. What I would like, though, is some clarity about what are the metrics by which we made the decision to distance, and what would be the decision point upon which we would go back. Because, you know, I don't know about any of you, or, or those of you who work with us, but I think there is some, some, some good utility in this, in the system as it's set up, with us sitting here in our chairs that we're used to and comfortable with. And I don't mind being at, we call it the kids' table down there. I don't mind being down there at the kids' table.
Yeah, you guys got ice cream.
Mr. Tower and I, we were down there, and we had a good time. But I, I would, I do think we need to have some understanding about what would be the point at which we would return, and what would that be based on.
And the other thing is, too, with the Delta variant, it's a bit more contagious, but it is far less lethal and effective. And the other thing is, people are vaccinated, have very, very low incidences. Ms. Henley?
That's not what I've been hearing Dr. Fauci say.
Well, Dr. Fauci is, I won't go there.
Let's not get into that. But, you know, I, I think to say that masks aren't effective is not what we're hearing. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm getting a little nervous here by some of the things I've heard said.
Okay, but, you know, like I said, I've been in the business.
Well...
Mr. Mayor, maybe we could have staff check with occupational health about putting the, the plastic shields in between these desks where we're separated, with the plastic shield.
Is that a possibility? Mr. Duhany, is that a possibility?
Good job, Rocky.
Boy, talk about a fresh set of eyes. How about that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, recently, just want to let council be aware, Howard University is a recipient of a significant research study that impacts, that studied the impacts of STRs, which we just talked about, we seem not very sure of. But they received a, a really big research grant, the study impact STRs on the hospitality industry and localities. And they reached out to me to, to garner my input and participation on a possible panel from a local perspective in terms of policy settings, execution, and implementation. And I don't know if I have any much hair left to, to sit on that panel, but I, I plan to participate and, and share our perspective and our gripes and stresses and what we've been through trying to get this thing right going forward. But I asked the city manager as well to attend with me to provide an implementation and execution perspective. And I don't know if this will lead to something, but I just wanted to let you know about this, this opportunity.
And, you know, Aaron, thank you for doing that. I had a conversation with Dr. Argonwald at, from ODU, The Economist there. And he has a perspective, and he kind of shared with me what he, he was going to be interviewed on, and had a different perspective. Maybe we can get you in touch with him, too.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And that would be, you know, a good thing. Yes, ma'am?
Do we want to talk about the timeline?
Yes, we do.
As much saddened as I am that we are losing our vice mayor, Jim Ward, I mean, it really touched me that we are losing him, and it's going to be incredible loss to all of us and to the city. But we are going to have to not replace him, but fill that spot. And there's a timeline.
No, 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 we would...
Do we want to act on this timeline?
I think we have to act on it. Mr. Ingram, once again, we have a, some of the same conditions with the Kempsville replacement, 45 days from the time of letter of resignation. Kemp'sville replacement, forty-five days from the time of letter of resignation.
Yes, uh, so forty-five days from September first is October sixteenth, which is a Saturday. So, uh, the law says that when the, when you're required to do something on a day and it's not a, a business day, that you have until that Monday. So, if you really wanted to wait to the very last minute, um, that would be Monday, Monday, October eighteenth. But, uh, the schedule that's been proposed by the clerk does not cut it that close.
Okay, yeah, yeah, Mr. Rouse.
Um, before we, we, I know we're gonna talk about time, I just wanted to tell Jim, um, thank you for your leadership and, and your commitment. And I, I think when I first came on, I wasn't quite sure of the, the budget process. And I think, um, from the initial onset, you called and walked through the project, um, through the budget process really helped me out a lot, and I just wanna say thank you for that. But one of my most fondest memories of you serving and us serving together, and I'll never forget, was the speech you gave on our most darkest day, um, at the church. And I, I still hear you speaking that today, and I just wanted to say, man, I'll never forget that, and thank you for your, your service.
Okay, you know, I think, once again, uh, you know, when these things happen, they're sad. But once again, you know, we still have, uh, you know, the, um, to govern. And I, would anybody at this point be, um, object to at least moving forward with at least a proposed timeline for advertising and, you know, getting things out? I think, uh, once again, the, uh, you know, once, seeing, uh, I had a chat before with, um, Mr. Ingram, we're outside the window that we could even request to have it put on the November second ballot. And, but that being said, we try to have, um, the Kemp'sville seat put on the ballot, and, you know, it was rejected by the judge. So, once again, I think, you know, if I can make a recommendation that we at least, uh, start moving forward with the timeline, because, uh, you know, the clerk's got a thing, and tell you what, if you think about it, it is an awesome responsibility to collect, you know, uh, you folks really had to, you know, roll up the sleeves and get all those applications together and everything. So, you know, there's an incredibly amount of staff time here, so is anybody object to us at least moving forward with the, uh, proposed timeline at this point?
No.
Okay. Good. And the other thing, um, you know, that we're gonna, order of business we're gonna be doing is that the first, um, voting meeting in September the seventh, we will, uh, go through the process of appointing a new vice mayor. And this will, the, the term of the appointment will be Mr., uh, Wood's term. Uh, the vice mayor is elected every, by the council every two years. So, once again, the term of Mr. Wood's, uh, current term is December thirty-first of twenty-two. But once again, I think this is something that we're gonna have to, um, rapidly, you know, this is one of the first things that we're gonna have to do going forward, okay? All right, anybody else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.